Max, you have Chernholm? Yeah. I thought he said he was. Nancy said she wasn't going to be. Really? Okay. Well, then I'll just wait for Tanya. Are you ready?
No.
Okay, they're not back. Back. Still waiting? Take it off screen. There's nothing. Yeah, there's, uh, they've been handed out up here. All right, so we're gonna start this meeting, a couple of things before I get to approval of the agenda. Going through some technical difficulties, I think we just got figured out.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the other one is if you plan to speak today, I'd ask that you sign in on the back for sure, so we get names and spellings down. Also, there are a number of variances in front of us. Under state law, variance requires a vote of two thirds, I think, of, of the board members, not just the quorum. So, anybody who has a question of variance today will, will have to get them a unanimous vote for it. Oh, previously, when we've been in this situation with a couple of people missing, we've given people the option, if they want to defer, they can. So give that some consideration for the fuller board. Though, I think we've been informed one board member won't be here in September. So, I can't remember, I thought somebody else said they weren't gonna be here in September, too.
Hope you're here on the eighth?
Okay.
And I believe Mike is gone on the eighth.
Yeah, all right, so with that said, yeah, I thought Mike was gonna be here today. They tell me that, no, this Mike over here.
Chernholm.
Chernholm. Um, so with that said, can I get approval of the agenda?
We have approval of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, take a look at the July 7th, 2025 planning minutes. Um, they've been posted. Anybody got any edits? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the July 7th, 2025 planning meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post, that passes. Um, and now move to public comment. Now's the time, if you wish to make a public comment on something not on the agenda, uh, that you'd come up to, uh, make that statement now. If you're here to speak to something on the agenda, you'll be given an opportunity when that item comes up on the agenda. Anybody here to speak to something not on the agenda? Any none, we'll move to item three, variances. Can I get a motion to move into the Board of Adjustments?
Motioned.
Moved and seconded by C. Go into the Board of Adjustments, any discussions? Any none, all those in favor, signify by, five by saying aye.
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 It will go to three B, variance request, dead end road length. This ranch subdivision.
Uh, Shane in Boston, it's baseline surveying.
That helped. John Kinsella, future landowner.
So this was seen in July's meeting as a form of intent, um, to get our feedback on him proposing roads with one, one ingress in and outs, and extending the thirteen twenty cul-de-sac. Um, so we're here for a variance to see if the variance would be supported or not before he moves forward with purchasing the property. Property is owned by Mr. Skull. And I know the purchase agreement is, um, right around the corner, so this was secure purchase agreement. And then also, if the purchase agreement does not go through, this variance would also be, would die if the purchase does not. You guys wanna talk about your project?
Yeah, so, um, I know last, last month when we came to the Board, um, it was mentioned that from someone, and it was a late afternoon, but they usually like to see larger than one acre lots at the bottom. Um, so especially in the middle, in the corners, generally, those at the bottom would be larger. Um, and then there'd be easement, easements for access on the far left corner and on the far right corner, um, to allow other, you know, future accesses for those landowners in case they wanna develop. Um, and I know I mentioned, it looked like there was other properties that were next to this property that would have issues in the future as well. Um, and I know you guys don't like giving out variances for this, usually. Um, but I do think that this property is a good candidate for a variance, um, just because of the location close to Rapid City. And then also, it'd allow future growth. The people that would be here would be going to, you know, Douglas School District, be using mainly Penning County roads. Should be saving the county a lot of, a lot of money as well. Um, and I know one obstacle I, that I was originally looking at was I believe I could come here and ask for a variance for a second access, even though they'd be so close to each other. Um, but we would lose approximately ten lots by doing so, which is a lot of, a lot of taxes, and it'd make this project difficult to, to make sense financially as well. Um, so that, and what you see out there, like, I go out to the soccer fields multiple times a week, and I drive twenty minutes. Like, this is just a good location, and it's, it's kinda sad to see multiple ten and forty acre parcels being made so close to the, the town, and then you have one to two acre parcels all the way at Elk Vale and Elk Creek. Um, that's just a lot of driving, a lot of road use. And if a person has a, if a person wanted affordable housing, back on their thirty minutes of their drive time a day, gas, wear and tear, and especially with the, the city of Box Elder not having any future use for this area for the next twenty years, is what they told me. Like, where, where's water gonna come for the, these areas? And that's, you know, there, there's a good water source right there. So it'd be nice to maximize it to its use.
Um, I guess the only thing I'd like to add to that is that, um, John did just say there is a, um, public water system available in this area for these lots. And then also, I'd just like to point out, from two twenty-fifth down to where the loop will start, we're, we're just really close, that's about where that thirteen twenty mark ends up, is where we start our loop, give or take, you know, a couple fifty to a hundred feet here and there, so. But I just wanted to point that out. So our length, before we hit the loop, that's about where the thirteen twenty requirement is.
And I did reach out to, um, multiple of the adjoining property owners, and I wasn't able to get a second access. I am, I'm gonna continue to work with those landowners. Is there is a opportunity, if this gets passed even in the future, I would go, go forward with that. Um, I did kinda just look at the map to see if there was other properties that had a similar layout to this in the Horseshoe acre development. It's pretty similar on the layout of where it has one access, and then it loops back to itself. You know, and I, I'm not saying you should give me a variance because of that, but I just, I don't know if there's been issues up there or not. So I just wanted to, if it's issues weekly, um, you guys would know about it, so.
Okay. Um, questions for the proponent?
Go ahead, Roger. I've been visiting with adjoining landowners. So there was no takers as far as working with you on other egress, or?
So two, two of the landowners, um, I believe are, um, in prison, as far as I'm aware, or I wasn't able to get ahold of them. And based on the, based on internet, that's what I could find. And I did talk to, um, the three others. The one that Willis, uh, thought might give access to the previous Bridle Ridge development, and they, they said no. Um, and then the one on the south, he also said no. And then on the one on the, that corner, that's up on the top right, um, they originally told me no, and there, there might be a chance there, but the, the landowner told me no, and she was pretty persistent on, she didn't want anyone coming by. But there, I could continue to work with these people, and something comes from it. The, the one thing I do see a problem on the top right is just where's a road go through their property? It's so tight.
Yeah, the, um, uh, is, did you have another question, Roger?
No.
I've got a couple of comments. Um, you know, you've got kind of layout for lots, I, I'm not, I don't think it's necessarily workable how you have your lots laid out, 'cause of where your drainage is gonna, you're gonna probably need to have bigger lots, maybe even up front, to deal with the drainage, make sure you have enough buildable space. I don't like in that loop where you have that kinda forty-five degree coming back to it, because, you know, generally, the preference is a straight, you know, right angle. Um, a, uh, and those have, those are just some comments when you're going out to do your design, that those are the areas I'll probably push back on. Um, the potential public access easement locations, I, I think, it's my understanding you're willing to give both of those to get the, as long as the variance is granted. Is that correct?
Correct, and, and I'd be even open to, um, you know, the one on the top right, it'd only really be for that one parcel, but, um, when talking to the landowners, they, they first said no, but, um, I think their son might be, um, taking over in the near future, and that might be an opportunity in the future. So I'd, I'd be open to that, too. The, the one thing about the forty-five road, I thought, um, last month, someone preferred to have it kinda go that way, maybe for more gradual access to the main road.
All right, well, I don't call it, maybe somebody made something, said something that, but...
It was a long day, too.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, right, you know, you know, key intersections are always preferred.
Right.
Because it's just easier to look both ways and make sure that when your traffic coming back over your shoulder.
And, and one thing I didn't mention, like, that forty-two lots, that, I don't foresee forty-two lots either, and that's why, if there was a second road through the same parcel, and I lost ten lots off, off of that, and then once I figure in the drainage, you know, it, it wouldn't even make sense to develop that southern portion, um, because of that drainage. So I, we'll be below forty, I'm sure, but...
Yeah. Well, the other thing I think, um, that I'd look for is where you're dedicating that easement area, those probably gonna have to be kind of larger lots, so if the road's ever built, you're not squeezing those lots out.
And I think we'll have to do wider easements, rather than just a twenty-four, just to allow if one of them, one of the lots allowed it, and you had to do a, a little turn inside of it to access one of the parcels.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the, the potential public access easements should be the same width as your roads through there, so. Um, which I'm thinking...
Fifty-six foot?
They're sixty-six, right. So, I mean, you know, I've seen this done a couple different ways, where it's an easement, or whether they just plat and give the lots to the county. I think some of it's a benefit where it's an easement, 'cause then people will actually maintain it till it's built. Usually, people will mow the whole area, um. But I guess I'd be, you know, if we go forward with this, I think maybe that's something to consider as to how, how you wanna do that. Um, so other questions for?
Uh, yes, sir, pardon me. Um, learning a lot, I've been doing this for a couple of months, but how is this road gonna be maintained if you're only allowing one access and exit point? Obviously, it's very, very crucial that it maintains durability and accessibility all the time, not just for everybody, but the school buses, emergency vehicles, everything else. So is this gonna be a road association, or are you taking it on, or you hoping they all work together?
Yeah, no, the developer myself would, would maintain the road until the lots were sold off, and the HOA would take responsibility for that road.
Could do a set of covenants requiring that?
Yeah, very similar to how Bridle Ridge has theirs developed. I think I even, um, am kinda gonna mirror those covenants.
Bridle Ridge being the development immediately to the west?
Right.
And then this question would be for staff, please. How sanctenance is this two-point access for this stipulation and guideline? He's requesting a variance because obviously he wants to have a change to what we accept. Can you give me a little history as to why we wrote this, and why is it you feel necessary, um, to remember before we decide on this?
From the research I did, there is no other access point to the center of the section from any plats, easements of record. As we move forward with plats in the area, the center of the sections are gonna kinda be more of a challenge. So we're probably gonna end up looking at changes in some road lengths, or how we egress, ingress out of the center of the sections. I don't, I don't know where Horseshoe Acres is, sorry.
It's ju- just north of the bit, right north of the lightway, or the base.
Yeah, they're bigger lots, it's a...
I think there are two to three.
Yeah. Um, but it's just down the road, basically, from this location.
Then there's also one to the west by the gravel pit, that's a very similar. But that, that actually has just, it doesn't even have a loop, and there's fifty lots on that.
Okay.
From the history, some of the history on this is, you know, we're a big county. So sometimes, uh, uh, between the terrain, it becomes important to, to make sure, for fire protection generally, and just for emergencies. Like, if you have an accident, you can't get out, it blocks the road. Um, that you have an alternative way in or out. Um, part of the problem we've got that we're trying to become cognizant of is what this lot kinda got stuck with, and that is, you'll chop everything else up along the roads, and then all of a sudden, the center, access to the center is difficult, if not impossible. We're trying to reserve some of that, and this ground, because of the way this was developed around them, does not have great way to have a secondary access. And that's why we've done this on a couple of them, where somebody's coming in to develop it, we ask them to reserve these accesses. So the, the theory is when the neighbors sell their land, or it gets subdivided twenty years from now, they can punch that road through, or that'd be part of their subdivision requirement.
But these are all possibilities, not guarantees, and...
Um, yeah.
Yeah, and the conundrum I see here is, if I recall correctly, um, you were looking at, um, enlisted or officer housing for the personnel, what else would therefore be, as your primary clientele?
Yeah, some, some type of affordable housing. I know even the Bridle Ridge sold at, uh, you know, three fifty, four hundred thousand, initial, um, in the initial development. Um, wh- where can someone go to, to find something like that anymore? It's, you go by ten acres is the closest parcel to this, that's for sale. In other words, you gotta drive another ten miles north.
Well, I guess part of my problem with it is, is that, um, it looks like, like I said, you got a lot of, you, you got a lot of subdividing in there, and what you're gonna look at as far as how many units. But from what I'm hearing is that there's gonna be some changes to those sizes of those lots to accommodate, um, some of these restrictions. And I think it's safe to say that if you have to sell bigger lots, and usually you put bigger houses on it, which is gonna fall outside the ability of a lot of people maybe to pay for it, the lower ranks. Um, so it's definitely a conundrum. I'd wish I had the answer for it.
Yeah, so, um, based on the research I've been doing, these lots will sell for half the price of what the nearby ten acre parcels will sell for, approximately. Similar to where, what the lots are selling for on Elkville and Elk Creek, which is quite a jaunt out there.
Yeah, you know, it does help to have that regionalization of water close by. I do appreciate the argument that, or the, the point that you made, that, you know, some of these smaller lots should be closer to town, and not eight miles from town. Need some of these smaller lots, building lots closer to town. Um, you know, one of the reasons Haynes is beat tech is because the traffic has gotten so heavy on it to support all this development. That has to be three, four miles, six, eight county road before you get to it. Um, other questions?
Keep referring to the top right, I'm trying to...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, kinda where my red box is?
Box, oh, there's one that's by, uh...
To the left of where the mouse is, oh.
This one here?
Yeah, that one right there. That one might be a po- potential, um, access in the future.
I'm sorry, say, tell me again, where, where are we?
Andrew Thompson's property, this one here, Roger.
Like...
Has left open the possibility of a road, or?
Not initially, it was a pretty strong no initially. Um, and then the, the, um, a family member did call me, and that it might be something in the future, but as I see right now, she's the landowner, and who knows what's gonna happen with it.
Otherwise, easement between twenty-three and twenty-four, and I understood you say, uh, sixty-six foot easement?
The, the ordinance requires a sixty-six foot, it's not right away dedicated.
That, uh, border section?
Line, oh, on this place? Center cars here.
Yeah, it's just a one sixty-fourth, so. Regardless, that landowner to the right there would have to be, well, the reason that improvement would ever get made to the next, you know, main road, so.
Yeah, I mean, these are, that's why I asked for, you do both of them, 'cause you expect this land will get developed someday.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't know which piece.
Right.
Um, I, actually, the options essentially give you access to multiple different landowners, so for the person who develops, we could, you could then do something with it.
Yeah, I believe the water source is allowed for three hundred and twenty homes, approximately. So that it, it would really allow that land to be maximized and take advantage of the water source that is nowhere else nearby. And one thing else I was gonna mention, when I, I met with the city of Box Elder, they, I, I think I brought up the one access, and they said that, that what, how they would see that was, like, there was an issue, I think, somewhere in Box Elder, along the river, where there was only one access. Um, and it's, from my understanding, it's more for, you know, river bottom areas where they could flood, or, you know, forest areas where there's trees and...
Rain, fire, yeah, emergency vehicle. Um, so, uh, let me see, is, is there anybody else here to speak to this variance today? Any, any additional questions for the proponent, or does the staff have anything else on it?
No, I do not.
Staff have any comments on, on the proposal that they'd like to share?
What's the road length?
Total?
Total.
I'd say, 'cause to that cul-de-sac, that's thirteen twenty. We just wanted to see where thirteen twenty is, so imagine the, making another thirteen twenty loop.
So that, that would be a variance request, that thirteen twenty, I mean, ballpark?
I think it's approximately three thousand square foot total, or three thousand linear foot.
When you include the cul-de-sac, or the...
The loop, yep.
Yeah, we've, we've approved, and we've also denied road length. Topography has a lot to do with that, you know, with, um, access for emergency vehicles. I would say that we've got added easement locations in there for future, possibly. That's a tough one, too, with our road length at times.
So, other questions, comments, staff have anything else?
The ordinance twenty-six eleven two, um, as an alternative to extending a street or a sub-street within a subdivision to undeveloped property, the planning board may recommend a reserved lot or permanent access easement for future plating on the, on the plat. So we can reserve that on the plat. That's, it does give us a tool to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done it, like I said, on a couple of them, um, where people are like doing multiple forties along the frontage. And we see, well, at some point, you gotta reserve a spot to break through to the back. Um, and I think if you reserve these two points, those are two really good points for areas where you could come in, uh, because one goes out east, and then one potentially opens up those other two areas. You know, some of this is, I think this is a more efficient use of this land. Allow smaller, smaller lots in this area. Oh, I... So, um, I don't know if there's any motions or questions, or if people wanna ask different thoughts, or?
I make a motion that we approve the variance contingent upon two sixty-six foot easement locations for egress.
And future development?
For future development, correct.
This, this land, you do not own currently?
That's, that's correct, I have an extension with, um, the current owner on the purchase agreement.
So we're granting the easement to the current owner?
Or with...
We're granting the variance, we'll grant the variance technically.
To the plat?
Yeah, well...
Or to the property?
To the property, and then they'll submit the plat, 'cause it doesn't, we don't have a full plat on this one yet. Yeah, 'cause he didn't wanna go through the cost of doing all the plating and drainage study.
Right, right.
If you can't develop one. There are second to Roger's motion.
Lower square.
Well, you could add that if you want, that they do a looped road, and there's two variances, if you wanna add that. I'm fine with that, I, they're gonna loop it simply because otherwise, he's gonna have, he's gonna lose about fifteen lots, yeah. That's... Without the loop?
That, that's okay with the loop, that's...
Yeah.
I would amend motion to add the loop.
Okay, so your motion is to allow the variance conditioned on granting of two separate future, uh, public access easement locations. future, uh, public access easement locations, uh, to neighboring property, and requiring that the low- road be looped so it intersects in at about that thirteen, fourteen hundred foot length? Yes. Yeah. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Similar to how we have it laid out, right?
Yeah.
So we're not-
Yeah, it's, you know, it gives you some variability. Like I said, I prefer that right angle.
Yeah, I'll take that one.
If you come in and make me a good argument, why it doesn't make sense.
It kinda makes that one lot-
It'll be right.
Yeah.
It makes that one lot a little goofy anyways, so that makes sense.
Yeah. Um, discussion on the motion?
So Max has a motion up on the board, if you guys agree with it. Try this again.
Good. Thank you, Max.
Um, can we add to that motion, if I get the picture in the second, or is- Separate sixty-six foot wide, future access at locations agreeable to planning?
Yes.
Yeah, because I don't wanna get in a situation where he puts them next to each other, you know, not saying that he would do it, but, um, but, uh, and then argues that that's complies with the very-
Put him on the regular road?
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, with that, uh, addendum, uh, any other discussion? Thanks for typing that up, Max. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
If they oppose, well, that passes, then. Um, congratulations, and good luck figuring it out.
All right, I'll see you guys soon. Thank you.
variance request, section line right-of-way dedication, ordinance twenty, uh, Whiskey Ridge. Is this their only variance request is the dedication, or is there another issue here?
There's another one.
Are they in a different var- is that the next one, then?
They're in planning board number four A.
One has to go to-
Okay.
To this ordinance, standing has to go to the commissioners.
And that's the length of the private drive, then?
Yes.
Okay, um, you think you can deal with them both? We- you don't have to, or you wanna come back up and do them separately?
Um-
Present them both and have to come separately?
Yeah.
With approval, but yeah.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start pitching.
Okay. Um, so what we have here is Whiskey Ridge Development, which we, you guys, we come and spoke to you guys about last meeting, um, get your inputs and everything, uh, to answer questions, any concerns, so. So at this point, um, the first part of- the first part of the, um, the variance request is there- there's a section line right here, very close to the existing Bear Butte Road. So what we have there is, um, we're just asking not to dedicate, so Lot One is owned, obviously, by the Whiskey Ridge LLC. The south side of that section line is owned by the city of Sturgis, um, so we're just asking not to dedicate this thirty-three foot strip, just for the fact that Bear Butte Road already exists right next to it. Um, it would be in the tent for- for future to possibly purchase the property from the city, just to clean up that whole corner, um, but again, so that's what we're asking for on the section line dedication. That's reasoning for that variance.
Let's, um, let's deal, I wanna, uh, let's deal with this one, actually, right now.
Okay.
Um, is there anybody here on the section line variance question? Okay. Um, so the- the whole thing is just that we don't- you don't have to dedicate the section line. The section line's still gonna be there, and the reason you're not dedicating is because there's a road, a public road built off the section line and existing already.
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
Setbacks still apply and everything to the section?
Yep, still a section line area. Yep, absolutely.
All right, um, anybody have questions for the proponent? This one's a- this one, I think, is a pretty easy one, which is nice. I mean, it makes sense to me, since there's already a public road there. There's no- there's a reason the public road probably is not on the section line, because it's easier to build where it's at. Um, anybody wish to make a motion to approve this?
A motion?
Okay, is there a second? They moved and seconded to approve the variance. They do not have to dedicate the- that's the section line in that southeast corner of the property. Discussion. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, so that passes. Um, the other, and Shannon, I'm gonna backtrack a bit. I think I'm gonna have you come back up, because the- that's not a- the other one is not a full variance, it's just a recommendation that we give.
Oh, okay.
So the voting's different on that, and it doesn't happen in board of adjustment, so that's why I mistake and kinda trying to group them there.
Yep, I'm good on that.
Sorry about that.
Nope, no problem.
Okay, so we'll move to the next variance request, right-of-way dedication ordinance Okay, anybody wanna talk about this one?
All right. Um, so on this particular one, if everybody remember, we just, uh, the DOT just got done with a major road, or a bridge improvement across nine ninety in this area, where Pleasant Valley Road used to be right here, within this area, but they basically got rid of it, and they built this all brand-new, uh, realignment road with the- the new bridge, so. So, in that process of acquiring property, the DOT purchased the prop- can you go a little bit? Yep. So the DOT purchased this property from the landowner to the south once they split this with their new road alignment, so. So what we have is, we have a parcel of DOT properties in that two-plus acres. Now, I don't know exactly, but it's right around that area. So, um, the landowner of this plat is actually in negotiation with them. They actually purchased that property, and just the fact that they got- the section line, of course, will- will remain as a- as a true section line, um, but we're just asking to not dedicate that area in between here and here. So we basically lined up there, started our dedication at that point, because that is the new road alignment location, so. So that's the area that I'm pertaining to on this variance.
Okay, so where you show Pleasant Valley Road there, coming up from the south, is the current location of the road with the new exit?
Correct, yep.
So you're gonna dedicate everything in the section line and the additional right-of-way, where that basically hits that section line?
Correct, yep, yep.
But you're asking not to dedicate the rest going over the interstate, since there'd never be a road there?
I figured since they abandoned it, might be a while before they put it back, but-
Yeah.
But again, it still remains a section line.
It is the state.
Yeah, right. It still remains open, it's a section line open to the public, so.
Right, just not gonna be-
Improved, yep.
All right, does everybody understand the request? Questions for the proponent?
This is related to ordinance twenty, at Article six nine.
Basically, the same- the same way, uh, variance is optional, the last one. Is there anybody here to speak to this variance? Sir, did you wanna come up and speak? You have to come up and identify yourself, please, in the mic, so we know who you are, and, um-
I'm, uh, my name's Jeff Byers. I'm a brother of a owner across the street from Bulldog Campground, where the sticks affect, and I'm a resident there also. Um, the, uh, question we had was, uh, along the section line where the road used to be, uh, Williston Basin, uh, Gas Company, MDU, uh, has a gas line structure there. You can see it in, uh, Lot Four. And they come out to that structure at least twice a year to bleed the gas, and we're wondering, since the road no longer exists, the gas line's been there for decades, uh, they probably had an access easement off the old Pleasant Valley Road, along the old section line, but now, with the road moved, how are they going to access that?
I don't know. Shannon, have you seen any-
Well, the- the old road bed is still, it remains there. I mean, that could be something worked out as landowner, that that section line is still open for that- for that reason, for public access if needed, especially I could see for something like that for Williston Basin, so.
But I mean, has anybody taken that into account? Talked to the, uh, gas company? Is it- is there an existing agreement?
Yeah, so I- I don't know, um, but what this- he's not asking that we, um, vacate the section line, so people can still go down that section line.
Okay.
Even though he's not dedicating it. What he's- what he's asking is just, we don't dedicate it, and then- then it's no longer part of their property, it's officially just dedicated public right-of-way.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. So then, uh, dedication means that the property is still owned by the county, uh, the thirty-three feet off the section line?
The-
Each side of the section line?
Yeah, eve- if we- even if we don't dedicate it, the section line still ex- stays, and there's still the sixty-six foot right-of-way set by state law.
Okay, so they can just drive down there and got you?
But we will address it. No, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, I mean, look to see if there's any easements or anything like that. It is probably, I think the question's probably gonna be closer to when you go to plat it, is will- something for- to aid Williston, if they have to get back there, have to be done. Thanks for pointing that out.
Sure.
Anybody else to speak to this variance? Okay, this is just on the variance, not on the plat, so everybody knows. Um, any other
Move approval of the variance?
Second.
Discussions on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
If they oppose, that variance passes, too. I'm in the water today, I guess. Um, variance request, road improvement and right-of-way dedication, Harrell- Harrell's Ranch Estate?
Harles.
So on this particular plat, we're asking for both the road improvement variance and Cause we're doing the dedication. All right, we're looking-
And only plat the west half.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, yep, sorry. Okay, so this one is, um, a variance for road improvements and the requirement to dedicate, um, adjoining landowner's property of dedicated public right-of-way. So you'll see on this plat, um, the, um, the proper amount of dedication public right-of-way for- for Evelyn- for Bear Butte Road, um, is being dedicated, so, and then being that road, it's county road, um, very good road. They are asking for a variance to not improve that strip of road, to widen it four more feet-ish, and then that's basically what we're hearing here today, so.
So, the road condition's good, it's just the fact we've changed our standard for county roads, it's all at, what's the length, what's the width of the roads now?
Twenty-three-ish, so right in there. Varies in width, but it's still a pretty good road, twenty-three, twenty-four, so.
Somebody required twenty-eight.
And we're now required-
We're now required twenty-eight.
Yep.
So it's all that twenty-four through there?
Yep.
I've, um, how is the access to her land in the back gonna exist on the west side?
On the west side of the property, um-
The stuff you're not plating?
That portion that we're not plating, that's still, um, is owned by the property owner to the north. That's all one parcel, or they own both those parcels, Harles. Their home is actually just on the north side of these two platted lots, or, yep, so. So they'll remain ownership of that eighty, I believe that's an eighty, yep, but they'll retain ownership of that as well as- as their home up above.
Yeah, 'cause the only thing I'd go back to, Shannon, is the discussion we had on that first variance you were up here for, and that is trying to make sure that we maintain access to that land in the back and it doesn't get landlocked.
Right, right. There is a section line on the north side of Harles' home, that is, that's a section line there, um-
Doesn't touch that back, that floor?
Right. And terrain-wise, I know what you're talking about, but terrain-wise on this particular property, there's a pretty big hill, about where that arrow points-
Yeah.
-to the ranch. So really, access to that back might be more, you know, challenging or for future, um, owners of that land if they are decided to develop that, but.
Okay, other questions? Um, is there anybody else here to speak to this variance? You'd have to come up, ma'am. Ma'am? If you come up, ma'am, if you come up and get to the mic and then state your name, and then-
My name is Ann Honest. We're adjoining to landowners.
Okay, you're the- to the south there?
Yes.
Okay.
And maybe I'm reading it wrong. The letter we got had to do with an approach? A variance for an approach?
Yes, and that's in, um, section four, because it's Rose, and ordinance ten, sorry.
Yeah, so we're gonna well address that when we get down to it.
Okay, sorry, my- my error.
And that's, um, that's-
Four B.
Okay, yeah, not- not a problem. This gets confusing, 'cause there's different types of variances. We decide some variances at this level, some we just have to make recommendations, they have to go to the commission. That's- that's a road variance, commission controls those variances.
Okay, okay, my error.
That's all right. We'll see you again.
We're- we're actually looking at two variances, is that right, on this one?
Yes. Not to plat the east half of Bear Butte Road.
Right. So that first one, what, according to the variance, or, uh, the ordinance, what is the required road width?
Not to improve it to twenty-eight foot wide road.
But currently it is?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, and we've been kinda giving these out, 'cause we- we've got these county roads that run for miles at the old twenty-four.
Right, right.
Um, uh, I- one thing I talked to Tanya about on these, and, you know, Shannon, why don't you listen to this, 'cause it's gonna impact you, is I- I would like a little bit more information regarding the existing road surface and exactly what they're asking, 'cause I- and one of these just said, wanted a variance from ordinance twenty, and just that's all it kinda said on the ro- on the road. Um, and so it would be helpful to maybe have some pictures and some measurements when you're coming in on these in the future, uh, what the road looks like, and that we- 'cause you're sitting here going twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, and we're taking your word for it, but- but, um, I just think it'd be easier if you're out there kinda looking at it all, that you kinda take some of those measurements, take a couple snapshots of it, so that we know as planning that, um, what the road looks like.
Yep. No, that's not a problem at all, 'cause I have done that on some-
Yeah.
-that have been in questions. You know, like I said, once we're there, it's not that much to, yeah.
And I'd like the variances for on these road, uh, questions to be really clear as to what, not, you know, as to what. Is it-
Okay.
Distance, is it- is it- is it width, is it something else, is it? I know most of these have been width, when you look at those roads, but, um, you know, occasionally we get these where they don't wanna improve the road to county spec, because they're building the road, and there's a difference between that versus existing, and-
Right, okay.
So it's- it's sometimes when you're reading these, it's hard to kinda figure out what- what the variance is asking for. Um- Yeah, I mean, you'd be out there anyway, and with today's-
Mm-hmm, yep.
ability to take pictures with your phone, and even if you're laying tape measures down or something, give us some. Yeah, that'd help.
Yeah.
Hope you have.
Um, just laying the road.
But we have GPS, too, and you can take a shot and walk across the road and take another shot, so it's pretty easy.
Yeah.
In a couple spots, so.
Yeah.
Literally take-
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then getting your pickup and drive a little further and get out and take a shot.
You're too old-fashioned, see. You're too old fashioned, see. Um, yeah, so that's the two, um, issues here. Obviously, since they don't own the other side, they don't have the ability to dedicate it as part of this process. And then the improvement, um, we've been given variances on that for these county established roads, the counties maintain.
I see the superintendent, road super- highway superintendent recommends approval.
Yeah. One, sessions, more questions?
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm actually, I think you could make the condition so, because you're not making them improve the road. I think the way you would, you potentially do that is that they not be further subdivided, uh, um, if the road's brought up to existing county specs or something like that. Well, why don't you try saying a C, I'll see you later.
That it can no longer-
Okay, so your motion is to provide a variance from the dedication of the section line on the east side of the road. And a variance that the road doesn't have to be widened based on the condition that the lots not be further subdivided unless the road is brought up to twenty-eight feet. Okay, that makes sense? You got that Max?
Rather than say twenty-eight feet, would you say?
Existing county, county, yeah.
Ordinance.
Specifications. Okay, county specifications, I think is what, uh, was there a second?
Second.
Okay, Shannon, questions on that?
Nope, that's clear.
Staff?
No.
All right. Yeah, okay, um, discussions on the motion. And none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All right, F. Mid Estates. This one yours Shannon, still, still the Shannon show?
Sorry, I was reading past that one, but getting too excited. Um, okay, on this one, you'll be seeing the plat coming up next for a lot proposal of subdivision, um. So what we're asking on this one is basically very, it's same thing as the last one. So, um, dedication of the south and east side of the, um, section line right of way, which is the neighbors. Um, you'll see on the south side of this particular plat, we did dedicate the extra additional twenty-seven more feet as required according to Me County's road, um, road plan. So, and then again, we have the two existing, um, county roads that we are asking, um, to not have to, um, make the required improvements to.
Which improvements would those be?
Those would be the width, basically the width of that road, so.
Okay, questions for the proponent?
Okay.
But do you have something that you want-
I just, I was trying to see what name-
Clarifying what road name that was.
Okay. Is there anybody else here to speak to this variance today? Okay, again, questions for proponent?
The same situation where the road width is the same on long stretch.
Now the road, the county roads are built to twenty-four feet through that area, given age of the roads.
Correct, yep.
How's it look?
Yeah, once we get to the plat, that's where the discussion for planning for this prelim. We're thinking whether lot one would access off one ninety-fourth or, and we create two approaches off Dunn Road or that's part of the, what we're obviously gonna be the, one of the discussions on the plat itself, so.
Okay, um, other questions for Shannon? Whenever.
I motion we approve the variance ordinance twenty, Article six point one, two point four, not to improve one ninety-fourth street and Dunn Road based on the recommendation from Me County Sheriff's Highway Superintendent's Office. And there's a second one here to do the same thing, or the two separate motions.
No, you can do this, uh, several on not to dedicate on the other side.
Okay.
They do them as one motion then.
Okay, sorry. And to plat only the north half of the right of way to the one ninety-fourth street and only the west half of the right of way to Dunn Road.
Hey, did you, um, before you finish your motion there Mike, um, uh, do you wanna add that the lots cannot be further subdivided until the roads brought up to county specification?
You like what Say did earlier? Yeah, I bet her. She's looking at me funny, sure.
Trying to keep you out of trouble, um.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've been moving seconded, uh, variance to be granted based on, go ahead.
All right, but question on that, oh, I know we're just walking through this plating only the west half. So does this, the other half of the road is already platted, is that?
Uh, it's not dedicated, would be my assumption, but he doesn't have the power to dedicate that since he doesn't own the other side.
Um, just- Just-
So Ingrass and Dunn own the other sides of the road.
Right.
That's why we can't plat them.
Uh, just for my edification, uh, ordinance twenty has the statement, no new half streets shall be permitted. That, uh, how do I understand that statement?
That's why we're asking for the variance. So, the variance, the ordinance requires that the full width of Dunn Road on both sides on A Land and Company and Dunn Road to be plotted together as a full road as a twenty-six foot right of way. We're choosing not to dedicate Dunn's property.
That's the variance that's getting at-
So that's how we create a half street, now that's dedicated and it's a full right of way dedication.
Gotta depend on the section line right of way on the other half.
Thank you.
Other questions? And none, all those in favor of variance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, that passes unanimously. Go to, E, can, continue to variance request plat at half street.
Can we request, I'd like to request to continue this one, um, to the September meeting. And then if we don't, um, haven't reheard back from the owners, well, they're still working some stuff out, so. I know we're not gonna be, we're not prepared for that today, so.
Hey, so are you asking for it to be set or, or, but that you might not be able to make it in September either? Cause then it would be just easier to continue it until-
Oh yeah, no, that's just fine, yep, yep.
So just a general continuance?
Yep.
Okay. Um... Yep, tell staff, uh, and the proponent, um, feel it's ready to submit.
Okay, second.
Okay, um, but if, you know, anybody's got any comments having looked at it, uh, they could certainly make them. The one thing I'd ask is anybody here to speak to that variance that would wanna make any comments since they're here today? And none, it's been moving seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, can I get a motion to come out of the board of adjustments?
So motioned.
Moving second to come out of the board of adjustment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So then we go to regular variances, these next two variances are variances where we just give, uh, our opinions to the commission. It would be up to the county commissioners to actually pass these variances. Uh, variance request one, private driveway width, um, in Whiskey Creek.
Okay, so again, this Whiskey Ridge LLC subdivision that you've seen previously, um, as a form of intent. So what we're asking on the prelim, um, is the forty foot wide, um, private access easement. We're asking that to be one forty foot width and, um, rather than the required sixty-six foot. And then actually the road width itself, um, to be- fourteen feet wide instead of your twenty-eight foot, so. The, that particular road will service, um, two lots or three lots, I'm sorry, lot six, seven and eight. So, um, lot five will basically access off the cul-de-sac there. Um, is, is the best with, uh, approach placement for that lot, so. Um, so this easement is basically granted for the, for the benefit of lot six, seven and eight, so.
So lot six won't use the cul-de-sac?
Lot six, in that particular area on that cul-de-sac, there's, there's a pretty large incline. So they need to go, they will have to continue up and then, then enter into the lot, so.
Questions for?
That's correct, yep, starts here and then goes through here to lot eight, yep. So lot six right here will actually, it'll come up in access by right through there, in this area, so. Again, lot five, lot five works great, right there accents and right off the cul-de-sac, so. And again, I think on my previous plat, I kinda showed the, the existing cliff line within this area. So there's kinda one spot that that particular trail can be built on. And train wise, uh, really to build a twenty-eight foot wide road, um, within, in those, those kinda type of contours would be really challenging and really, I mean, again, it's only gonna serve the three lots. Um, so that's why we're asking for the variance on that part, so.
Um... So, uh, one thought I had on this, if we grant the variances, it should probably be conditioned on that access road being built prior to the plat being finalized. So that is all built and all developed before they, before you get a final plat, just like you would the road, since it starts more than one lot. This one here, Steve?
The, the circle line there. That's the cliff you're talking about?
Yeah, yep, yep, exactly, yep, that's the cliff line. And then everything from there down to, um, Bearbut Road, we're putting a non-access easement on that area. I mean, there's, you're, it's so steep in there that you, you can't access off that road onto that property, so, um-
So the reason I'm asking, so lot seven, even though there's an own, what is it, ten?
Yes, that's correct, yep, yep.
That drive through there is not an issue?
No, 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 no. Yeah, within this terrain, there's, there's only certain areas these things can go, so. We don't have the luxury, I mean, all the land is definitely not usable by no means, so it's, it's just, it's a little more challenging getting improvements made, but, you know, they're definitely doable, but, so.
How would this road gonna be maintained? Because I've been to some areas like this even around here and some of those roads look like they end up being in Panama because of the washouts and the runoffs and everything else based on the elevation and the terrain. I mean, is this gonna be a road association or private homeowner responsibility? Because a person's gonna own that lot seven, uh, that's a big chunk of this that they're gonna be responsible for so the people in lot eight can get in and out.
Yes, so, so we will, we will have those addressed, we'll have that addressed in the, in the covenants. I believe we've already handed a copy into, um, the county for review, just, you know, just so they know where we're at. And actually, we're looking, when the plat comes up, we're looking at a community lot concept on the roads that would, that would maintain and be in full liability of, of maintaining all those roads in the future, so.
Uh, would this be like a shared joint responsibility? Because to be honest with you, I kinda live in this situation and, um, the people who live way down in that corner may not always be happy having to pay a lot in road maintenance for people who live way, way back there.
Right.
And they have to keep coming back and forth, back and forth all the time.
Right, I mean, how we have it set up right now, every, it's, we, everybody pays a certain amount into the HOA and all the roads are taken care of, so. That's how we have it set up now, so. Until we, you know, something could be figured out in the future, but. But we just wanna provide, we gotta provide something in insurance to the county on how those roads will get taken care of if this plat's approved, so. Um, that, that's the plan, so, but, so far, so.
Their engineering on this road or, and in your variance request, is there the road width? Or are you asking for a variance in the road surfacing or?
This would just be for the road width, the, the surfacing, we're gonna do, uh, county spec gravel. That, we're asking no for, for nothing on that, so, yep, so.
Is it engineered at all or is there need for culverts or?
We have not engineered this particular road at this point, so.
Do we have any concern about natural erosion over time based on the elevation and the grading?
I don't think so, based on the road builds, because it's all gonna be on a side slope, it's, so it's gonna be cut. It's cut down to drop, so leave on the road build itself, um, and that can definitely be inspected by county, you know, because if we are gonna make it a requirement that it has to be built before a final plat, then, then we can, so.
Do we have anything from the staff on this?
No.
Okay.
No. So no, to answer Stan's question, there were no plans or anything given for the forty foot wide road. It was just a variance for the, to build a fourteen foot wide road within a forty foot easement to meet the ordinance ten. That's the minimum we can do off of ordinance ten.
Yes, yeah, we've owned this property for, going on four years now, so. That's why, and we've really tried to been planning this whole thing out, it's not just a someday, you know, me, yeah, it's not, yeah. We're just throwing it together, we really have put a lot of thought into this layout, so.
Okay, other questions? I think I've asked, is anybody else here to speak to this? Okay, so, uh, discussions on the board or any motions, the, um, um, this would be a recommendation to the commission. So, it takes the majority to make a recommendation.
Move that we recommend approval to the commission of this variance conditioned that the road is built before the final plat.
Hey, before there's a second, do we wanna put, and do we wanna actually, as part of the variance, make a requirement that there's some, uh, something, uh, put in place on the land that requires the maintaining of that road? That sets forth how that, how that, uh, private drive will be maintained?
Yeah, we, we can add that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think there, there should be some flexibility whether it's a, whether it's a part of their covenant set, that they just maintain it with their other roads. Or whether it's just those three lots that use it has a joint maintenance. But that should be, get filed against the land, like a road maintenance agreement.
Yep, road, road maintenance be addressed.
Always, how about if we do it this way?
Yeah.
Say that, uh, that, um, uh, road maintenance agreement, uh, or road maintenance be addressed in a, in a document filed with registered.
Would be even better.
So, why don't you state your motion again?
I was afraid you were gonna ask that. Yeah, so, motion to, uh, recommend to the commission approval for the variance conditioned on road being built prior to final plat. And that, uh, road maintenance agreement. Or I got lost?
Filed with registered.
Filed with registered, yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, okay, discussion on the motion? Um, you know, I suggested that road maintenance agreement, I think, when we're doing something like this, I think that was a good point. To like, okay, how is that gonna get maintained? People buying those lots should know.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and not even necessarily the first people buying them, cause a lot of times you get people who kinda know each other splitting these plans up. But it's the second buyer that's really-
Or the third or the one further down.
The third and the fourth, right. So, any other discussion on the, and then all those in favor of that recommendation signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Abstain.
Oh.
To be consistent with last time we went through all the Whiskey Ridge stuff.
Yeah, uh, remember Monahan, uh, uh, stains, uh, which he's abstained on other things dealing with interior issues before. So, that would be for, no against, one abstention. And we'll go to item, back to my, go to the next item, which I believe now is the driveway access spacing, ma'am, that you were asking about before. So. Go with that, Jan?
Oh, so I can touch a little bit on the, um, approaches. So, there is an existing approach located right here in this southeast corner of lot two. So, the county, working with Tanya and everything, um, we are basically gonna be in the position where we have to remove this approach and then build a new approach right here in this location that will access the two new lots. So, as, from an approach standpoint, that's what we're, we're looking at for, for future. And then, of course, we have, you know, again, the neighbor non-est approaches right here, just not too far off this property line. And then Carl's existing approaches also up here, so. So, that's what we're looking for, for his, cause, for the separation, um, the required separation for approaches for that particular road, so.
There any approaches on the east side there in Kent Kreitz's?
No, no, Kent, he goes all the way up to the north on the section line, is how he accesses in there.
Curious if he had any for hay or anything like that to get into that field on that side.
I don't know.
It's, uh, kinda-
Can't answer that again. I didn't pay attention to that.
It's to create some separation between those two approaches, that now this is gonna be changing from like this basic ag approach to probably a couple houses.
The ag approach will be removed in the southeast corner and then add a new approach. It doesn't meet the five hundred foot spacing as required by the transportation plan. Shared approach was a compromise for the two lots to get plotted.
Okay.
We did, one of my question, one of my comments was, can the approach be put in ahead of time so that's the right culvert size for that? And the length of culvert for the shared, cause we have had problems with that in the past where one landowner put in their side of the approach and the other one doesn't match up to their approach.
Oh, yeah, that sounds like a nightmare. Um, hey, ma'am, did you wanna come back up and ask a question?
I'm honest, um, adjoining an landowner, and I think my question did get answered. It was, when we had talked to him earlier, um, there didn't seem to be a plan for that original approach that is right on the corner near our approach. And it sounds like the plan is now that that will be removed. And just to clarify, Kent Kreitz does have an approach directly across from that one, on his, on the east side.
From the existing one or from the?
Yeah, from the existing one.
Okay.
Kent does have one right across there.
Um.
It doesn't get used, so it probably doesn't even notice it, but there is one there.
Yeah, looks like a poor ditch, huh?
It does.
Okay, um, all right, is anybody else, any other questions you have, ma'am, or?
No, that was the main one, you know, uh, didn't want two approaches going into that property.
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense to have that joint approach. I also think it makes sense, planning's recommendation that that approach be built as part of the plating process. So, somebody doesn't come in and then drop one in, um, which we've had happen a couple times. Or as Tanya says, drop just one half in for some reason, um.
Happens.
It does.
And while you're still up here-
Yeah.
Um, previously, we were talking about access to the, their property to the rear of that-
Right.
Further to the west and south.
Yeah.
Do you foresee, do you have any comments?
There is, there is no access to that unless you go right through Carl's driveway or we give an easement. That would be the only way to that back property because of the terrain there.
Yeah, it looks like there's, uh, some drainage in that.
There is, cause you can't even build, I guess, on the top because of the drainage and stuff, there's a no build area. And a lot of that probably is flood, flood plain back in the bottom there too, right behind us.
You've had water in that area?
Oh, yeah, there has been. That's why we're built up on that side of it, of that property line, because it does get water on, um, what would be the south side of that little creek that goes through there. Um, there is.
Okay.
It has flooded.
Yeah, it's always good to know the, the local landscape of things from our map perspective that we see.
Yeah, you can't tell from there, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Nope, but that was, my question was answered, so. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, questions for proponent, proponent or staff?
Anything to add, staff?
Nope, I think everything got addressed.
Any comments, Tanya, on the, uh, contingencies?
On the what?
Contingencies.
On the recommendations?
Yeah.
Yep, so we talked about the shared approach, that is correct, and then it's of the agricultural.
Okay, uh, discussion or motion? Not all at once.
Move, move approval of the, of the variance.
Okay, so would the motion include recommending the requirement of the installation of the approach before the plat's finalized?
Contingent upon the approach permit submitted and approved for a shared residential approach? And, uh, permit is submitted and approved to remove the existing agricultural approach?
And then that the new approach be built?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. All right, that's, it's the staff's request or recommendation during that.
Second to motion.
Okay, discussions on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, but old business, final plat of lot two of Isler Ranch subdivision.
Um.
Again, we see you. Yeah.
Well, this one, um, we've all seen it before, basically, a little back history, this is where we're, um, trying to apply for the, uh, uh, building permit, uh, but we're basically to the, before the final plat. But we're here now going through the motions, um, on a regular schedule, so. Where this one is set up for the, uh, approved as a final, so. And on last meeting, there's no changes to be made that I know, that I'm aware of, it was just a matter of going through formality of, so.
What?
So, the approach was installed and it has been verified, um, approach permit, everything's been taken care of on that end.
Culverts in it?
Culverts are in it.
All right.
Only thing is, I will, um, I did not make it on the consent calendar for commission, so it is on tomorrow as a regular agenda item. That is the planning office error, that it did not get placed correctly, um, I've talked-
Doesn't need a pick big issue.
Yep, but, yeah, it'll go through tomorrow on, is on the agenda for tomorrow.
Can't get the building permit, all that is complete.
I don't think I have.
Correct.
And I can give you a foundation permit only.
Okay, questions? We have seen this before.
I'm ready to motion.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak to this plat? And on all those, uh, who knows, maybe we get a motion or I approve it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Since we're- I motion that we, uh, recommend approval of the final plat of lot two of Isler Ranch subdivision in the dedicated ROW Tilford Road to be substantially compliant with the applicable MEAT County Ordinance Twenty. Prior approval variances in the previous actions by the planning board, however, is contingent with the county commissioner's approval of preliminary plat. Go forward.
Yeah, moving second to discussion. And on all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Me?
That passed you down. Here we go with final plats of lot one R and two R of Moonlight Mountain Meadows.
Yeah, if I don't, I will contact him. I'll email it to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, go ahead, sir. Yeah, so this is the-
Not that big of a plat.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, this is a preliminary plat for final plating of Moonlight Meadows.
This would just, uh, change the lot line, not include, increase in the density, just buying some land from his neighbor.
Yes, just the lot line, as, um, all easements are in place. Um, HOA, Beethoven is the HOA which recommends approval of the plat off of Edgewood Place.
Okay. Um.
As presented.
Just hang in a second, is there anybody else here to speak to this plat? And on, now there's a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? And none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Pass unanimously.
By the end of the week. Yep.
Um, all right, for continuous preliminary plats of lots one A through one E, well, lot one. Harder subdivision. Um, and just so, uh, in case everybody, in case, just so the board knows, there's a revised preliminary plat that was provided this morning? That's been posted. So, it's on electronically, so make sure, if you haven't looked at it, you can pull that one up.
Then I handed out the email, that came from Devon Dennis on Friday to everybody.
And I believe, uh, Mr. Dennis-
I think everyone has a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yep.
So. Go ahead.
Okay, first one, we got a road name which you wanted, Passway. Second data, I'll let Tanya handle on the well data that she would-
So, the well data.
Isn't it mass, the well data? So, during July seventh's meeting, we requested the shared well between lots one R and two R. Does the well log be presented, um, a certified well inspector go inspect the well which he has and provide the well, um, pressures, uh, which is all there.
This is the existing well that serves the two existing houses?
It will serve, existing well sits here with a shared well easement on lot R of lot two of lot E. And lot one E does use the well that's currently in use on the house. And it was requested that they follow the ordinances of, um, thirty-three, that the existing well did have enough, you know, private well to serve both lots without having to tie into the proposed well off of Passway. Um, it does meet those requirements of ordinance thirty-three, um, the pressures, the depth. Um, and the last thing on the plat was the road name, those are the two requirements from the preliminary plat from July.
And the other one was the access?
Oh, sorry.
The access, which is number, item number nine?
Yeah.
Item nine, we added no additional access off of Sturgis Road or the sixty-six foot road right away, um, which serves the lot one E and lot two of lot, lot R of lot two of lot E. And we added some hatching, so it was easier to distinguish what was being requested for, um, note number nine.
Yeah, so, it would be, I think, helpful on that, I see the, I see it in the added plat note, but, um, on that lot one D, I think on that private access easement, probably, like, see if even labeled on the lot, on the lot that there's, that, that, one D, no ax, no access off of that easement. Um, I, I see what you're getting at, the hash marks do help.
Yep.
Um, but, um, you know, that, that easement was given for two houses and, and that lot one D needs to access off of Passway.
Correct.
Yeah, so I just would like a little clearer probably on the plat, I would at least, so.
Yeah, it was, it starts getting busy on the plat.
I, I understand, but-
That's, that's what it was.
There's a lot going on here, that we're trying to-
Is this something that we can address on final plat?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I'm not, I mean, that's a, that's just a, a notation, um, um, I think just something like, uh, no, uh, you know, lot one D, you know, you know, can't use that private access easement for access. I just think it has to be very clear. Trying to avoid fights, or overbides that lot one D. Um, uh, so as I understand it, the question on the well is, the existing well that serves the two houses currently has sufficient volume and pressure to serve two houses under our ordinances. Though, if the plat has a thirty foot wide access easement to lot one E, that well lot in case in the future they want to hook up to that well lot or drop off to change their access point, looks like.
Yep.
Um, yeah. Questions for the proponent? We've seen this one a couple of times.
Well, yeah, I just, um, this email that just got dropped on us this morning. Uh, we sufficiently answered that and are we still in the, in the spirit of what is requesting?
It's my understanding, the email that was, uh, uh, Dennis sent, that was forwarded to the state's attorney, state's attorney says this layout will conform with our-
Yes, this does conform with our standards of the ordinances.
And if I recall, there was some disagreement with the other property owners. There is no legal basis for us to not accept his request as far as anything involving what they had issues with.
Uh, Mr. Dennis is here, I'm assuming he might want to come up and speak, there's some other people here I think are probably going to want to speak, so why don't we have them come up?
Sure.
Oh, you want to come up?
Devon Dennis, adjacent landowner, shared, shared well and road agreement. The concern I have with the Meade County Ordinance thirty-three, seven dot seven dot nine, a private well cannot be installed on a property that has less than nine acres. A private well, water well cannot be installed when there is an existing community system. So if there's dispute in the future between me and the owner of lot one E, they can't drill their own well, or the ordinance.
They'd have to hook up to their-
And I read this as, since they will be part of that community, I feel they should be on the community's well. Because they are being, going to be platted as part of that community.
My understanding, the state's attorney says that-
The wall agreement does not state it has to be, the agreement has to be restated or anything. Agreement is for that lot, for both lots.
Yeah, um-
I guess I'm confused then, because it, the agreement was for the, the Goshke eleven and a half acres, not the Goshke two point nine acres.
But it's, it's not a new well being drilled on three acres, it's an existing well.
Well, sure, they can drill their well, I'm just trying to see, make sure that lot one E needs to go onto their new well. I have no dispute of them drilling the well, please drill it.
Yeah, well, yeah, it, but planning is my, and I would agree is that it's, uh, this would fit within the ordinance as they proposed it, um, now, uh, as I pointed out, we've made sure that they've maintained an access point, so in case they want to go on that well in the future, that's an option. But we can't really force them to give up whatever rights they have under that, uh, existing well.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else here to speak to this plat?
Hi, my name's Rob Schlungen, I work for Schlungen Design Consultants and I'm here to represent Doug and Bobby Legner and to talk about the density of the plat proposed, and I'm not sure if this hearing is specific just to the water issue.
It's to the plat, we're talking about the-
So, we'd like, we'd like to bring up a few points about the plat relative to density. Legners live adjacent to the proposed, uh, development and they are on a seven point five acre property with one home and obviously adjacent to a approximate eleven point six acre land with one home. And then the, the, or I'm, yeah, and then the Dennis's further down the road at ten point five acres. They feel it's very inappropriate and, and they moved to that area for a low density environment and putting a subdivision adjacent to them will certainly change their living experience. I have not seen anything relative to the variance application that addresses or identifies the hardship that could be brought to adjacent neighbors.
This is a plat, this is not a variance. There not, there's not a variance request here, this is a plat.
I'm sorry?
This is a plat, not a, not a, there's not a request for a variance.
So under-
It's a different statutory question.
It's simply a, a replat of the property, but, and, and as I understand it, there is no zoning for the properties.
There's no zoning in Meade County.
Meade County does not have zoning.
So, um, I mean, if, if this board and the county doesn't have the ability to consider the adjacent neighbors and the experience that they'll have based on this replating, I, I guess basically you're saying they have, there's no, nothing that would stop it.
Well, I'm not saying that, I, the, we are constrained that if they come in with a plat that complies with our ordinance, we have to pass that. If they come in for a variance, we can look at a number of extra issues, but they're not asking for a variance here. They're just, they're laying forth a plat that complies with our plating ordinance. The density, they actually wanted more lots, I think, at the beginning of this, which we, uh, because we, that we wouldn't get variances, that they had to cut down the size of it. Um, you know, I, you know, anybody who comes to these meetings regularly know that I often say to people, I wish we had zoning, I voted for zoning, but most probably other people in this room all voted against it, so, uh, you know, we don't have zoning. Um, um, I think if we had zoning, the people that lived in this county would be better served by what's going on in this county, but people in this county don't want zoning, so, nothing I can do about that.
And, and if I understand, so this proposed plat meets all of the zoning requirements?
There are no zoning requirements.
It meets the ordinance requirements of twenty.
There are plating requirements, not zoning requirements.
I won't take up any more of your time, there's nothing they can do about it, is what I'm hearing.
No question for staff? Okay, so he mentioned in fact about the low density, are we still in low density purview or are we now moving to medium or high density based on the amount of houses and stuff that are going up in this area? And do we meet all the requirements?
The density is per the subdivision that's being submitted, so he is, modified high density, and he meets those requirements set forth in the ordinance.
So my original question stands, there's no legal reason to deny him his request?
Not that I can find, no.
I guess I would just ask the, the commi, or the board to consider the living experience of adjacent neighbors based on your decision about this replat.
Understand.
Thank you.
Um, if anybody else wants to speak to it?
Bobby Legner, adjacent homeowner or landowner, um, I'm just here to reiterate a couple of things. Um, number one, reiterating what Rob just said is that Mr. Goshke is degrading the ability to live the kind of life that the residents in our area have built. Um, you can see how important it is to Mr. Goshke, do you see him here? School's probably started in Washington State, that's where he lives, and that's where he teaches school. And the other thing I have is, what recourse do we have if there's a community well and it draws down our well and we don't have the water pressure that we purchased? That's it.
Anybody else to speak to this one? Okay. Any questions for the proponent or any, uh, motions? Um, for the second, I would ask that, uh, my point on having a better labeling on no access off that driveway, you mean? Okay.
Oh, one D, private.
So there's a motion to approve it, uh, the preliminary plat is presented with the condition that there's a note on what lot one D that they can't use that private road as an access point. Is that correct? Okay, that's seized motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, discussions on the motion. Uh, comments have been closed, we've gone on to motions, so, um, you can certainly go, uh, uh, and ask, um, go to the county commission when it hits their agenda. Is it set for tomorrow, is it set for, be set for the, two weeks from tomorrow? The twenty-sixth, it'd be in front of the county commission on the twenty-sixth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote no, simply to keep it off the consent calendar, since there's been a lot of comment on this one. Um, frankly, I think he's complied, but, uh, I, I just don't want to, I think, if you guys want to come, make a comment, then we don't, as the county commission, don't have to take it off the consent calendar. We'll have to vote on that one separately. Okay? So, moving on, continuous preliminary plats one through eight and community lot Whiskey Ridge. Whiskey Ridge again.
Okay, um, okay, so the Whiskey Ridge development, um, consists of, this is lots one through eight. The, we have, we do have a, as we went over before, there will be a community well, or a private water system, which has already been developed. Um, we got the engineered plans in, reviewed, comments back to staff, so, um, basically the, you're moving fast.
Sorry.
You're right, okay, so, um, as previously, the two variances we went over were part of the concerns from last meeting, are part of the talk, so, um, so basically these lots, they're all going to be residential lots or we have a covenants in place, um, well share agreements, um, or covenants will address the well share agreements, the wa, the, the road maintenance agreements, et cetera, so, on all that, so, um, so again, I'm just trying to think of anything else we can go over, um.
Well, there's a, um, your well permit that you guys have submitted does not correspond to what the water source is, it looks like?
Hmm, yeah, we did contact, um, the, or, the state, um, um, go ahead Leah, you can talk about that.
Yeah, I reached out to the state, um, what we do is, we apply for the water rights to begin with. We project what aquifer we're going to be going into, and then the well is actually drilled. Both had been, um, processed through the state, so the well was completed and submitted to the state. There were no known issues, but based on the HDR comments out of Kansas City, we did reach out to the A and R just to see if there was any kind of conflict or steps that needed to be taken, and we haven't received anything back from them.
Yeah, you know, so my question is on that, so you don't have a permit for where you're drawing water from?
No, we do have a permit, yep.
What's, what's, what, uh, formation is your permit for?
It was for a projected, um, when we applied for the water rights.
Okay, have you applied for the water rights?
Yes, and we secured them with the-
For which formation?
Um, once we drilled the well, we submitted that, so it's for the Lakota-Dakota.
Your permit says that's your formation?
That's what we're clarifying with the A and R.
Okay, so, but your permit, you have a, currently have a permit?
We have a water rights permit.
Okay, that was granted for the Menelusa.
And we also have a well permit.
Wait, no, you drilled a well, and, but you don't have a water rights. So, I mean, I, I guess this is, to me, this, you know, how hard we're, I pay attention to these water issues. I mean, because I think, I mean, I don't think they can just amend your permit, I think you're going to have to reapply for a permit to the other water source. I don't know what, I don't know what the kind of, I'm not familiar with that, Lakota-Dakota, the ability to produce water in this area.
Well, we submit, I guess, that's how, um, all the water rights are usually reserved prior to drilling a well. And you project it, and then you submit the actual well.
I've never done it that way.
We did it that way.
Yeah, well, yeah, generally, I see when people submit for the Menelusa, they go to the Menelusa.
But we will, um, respond, once we get a comment back from the A and R, we will take whatever steps are necessary to amend our existing permit or reapply, but currently we do have a water rights permit and a well submitted and approved by the state of South Dakota.
Our intent was to go to that formation, um, just knowing what was in that area, but when the well driller drilled the well and we hit the formation we did, the, we all, we met on site, you know, as owner, one of the owners and the well driller and, and the production and the water and, um, he basically told us we'd be wasting our time and money and effort or whatever to take to that next level, so, that's where we chose to stop at that point, so. He said it was kind of a hit and miss deal, whether you're going to hit that formation or not, and we happened to hit it, so, we is, you know, we're pretty satisfied with that, so. But we will get clarification from the state, whether that's, um, a concern of theirs or, or how we need to address that, so.
Okay, so, I'm just looking here, do we have water testing on that then? Like quality of water, I'm just not familiar with that formation.
No, the well's not in production yet.
Well, that doesn't mean you can't do a water draw, I mean, a lot of times you do that when you're doing your well to make sure it's, you know, potable.
We can do that.
Yeah, the well driller did his field testing, um, on site to disinfect it and test it at that time, but no, we have not collected samples and submitted them.
Okay. Questions? Right, I mean, I, I mean, this water issue just, you know, I, I tend to be sensitive on these water issues, so. That's one that jumped out at me.
It, reading the notes, you said that you're going to have a, a cistern system and you're going to have a underground pressurized pump that continuously feeds in the cisterns. Um, I guess my question would be is, based on this topography for this area, where are those cisterns located and are they located in a way to ensure that they're going to keep equal pressurization as much as possible throughout the entire system?
Yeah, the cisterns are located right at the well, it's a ten thousand gallon storage tank, which, it's, uh, basically spices for our fire suppression requirement, so that's where we just, we're just, that's what, the system in its hole is going to be, those, those are right there at the-
And are these systems in a way designed that they can be maintained and inspected? And we found out from past experiences, some people never clean them. Um, so, are you guys going to be able to access these things on a regular basis, do maintenance checks and, uh, if necessary purge them and everything else to ensure the wall, the quality doesn't degrade over time due to buildup of soy residue and stuff?
Yes, and we will have a certified operator, um, that's approved by the state to do, um, continual testing or annual testing and maintain the chlorine level that will be added. Everything will be above ground, other than the booster pump that's in the tanks. And then it will have a pressurized system with a pressure tank in the booster pump house to feed each lot.
And then the local fire district, they, they're pretty happy with everything because you guys are in an isolated area in case there's a fire up there.
Yep, and we just received a letter that we'll share, um, with Tanya today, um, following the rally, approving, um, from the fire department for the plan.
Well, I got...
I thought staff didn't, wasn't there some drainage question on this too that wasn't answered?
Uh, yes. So, my question was, it's a memorandum, which I understand, but there's no submitted plans or documents updated. So this is all, the plans weren't updated to reflect your comments. Usually, you see a set of plans come in with the comments addressed to them and the documents to reflect those comments, so it's a some middle packet. This is a memorandum, which explains it, but is it completed? The drainage was downstream. The data is there, but it doesn't address, does it impact downstream property owners? It was notes there, but there's no additional information.
Not information to support the note.
I have reached out to South Dakota DA and R. They are looking into HDR's comment and the water right permit. I have, I'm not sure what the direction is on that either, so I have asked those questions, and I have not received an answer.
The drainage calculations are noted on the general notes plan that was originally submitted. All the calculations and flows and volumes are on that first page.
Make the conclusion as to impact on downstream people. Wasn't that a concern you had, or the comments from the engineer?
Of the comment, yes. Page 1. It's just a note.
We go through the drainage, yep, calculations for each of the crossings and analyze everything based on the 20-year storm event.
We analyze it 20?
25.
25. Mm-hmm. So we're collecting an area of less than an acre through one culvert crossing, and then like 1.65 acres to go through another culvert. So the drainage is very minimal 'cause we're at the top of the cliff or ridge area. So the flows are...
But aren't your slopes at different angles? Aren't your pipes at a different slope though?
Yes, they are.
That does not account for this drainage calc, correct? Those are, I mean, you're assuming the same slope in both culverts with your drainage calc.
Because they're, I guess they're minor slopes because the ditches are very shallow. But I can clarify any drainage with Tanya prior to final plat being approved, if that's necessary.
Well, you want those finalized, right? Then it would be necessary.
But I don't want it in a memorandum. I want documentation. It's not gonna be just... Usually, a memorandum is fine, but usually you, whatever...
They have attachments.
Ordinances or whatever needs to be updated in the set of plans is not being updated.
Yeah, well, how are you gonna deal with this water issue?
Yeah, I mean, we'll figure out with the state. I mean, what do we do? Drive down to the state? We've contacted them. Tanya's contacted them.
But you've got, so, you've got a permit for the Menloosa. Need a permit for Dakota-Dakota. And then generally, you'd see some kind of water quality testing. You know, Menloosa I know is pretty good, can be hard, but it's gonna be pretty good. These shallow aquifers have a lot more issues.
360, I believe.
I believe it's the same formation that Pine Cone Estates is tapped into, which is located to the north.
I thought the note said Pine Cone was in the Menloosa.
I'll have to check that, but I thought it was the same for them. And they don't have any treatment, I guess, on their system.
Yeah, at least according to the comment 10 that was submitted to you, it says, "All preliminary work is permitted permission to drill 1700 to 2000 and produce from the Menloosa aquifer as Pine Cone Estates of the west have. Completion report's only completed to 360 and is producing from Dakota and Lakota." Say that that's been submitted to SD DA and R, and what's been submitted is what?
Has the formation that we're using.
Well, yeah, but through the well report, that's what you would do, but I mean, but you've not submitted a permit or sought to get a permit for that at this point.
Yeah, I'm not hard centered about that. That's the state's call, I believe, so.
Well, every, you're not entitled to appropriate, interstate laws, as I'm familiar with it, you're not entitled to appropriate water from an aquifer unless you have a permit.
Right, right.
I mean, that's been your experience too, right?
Well, I'm sure, I don't do these on daily basis, though. So, I do a lot of surveying. I don't do wells, so. So, but we're gonna have, I mean, obviously, we're getting clarification from the state, so.
Okay, so, um, this memorandum, I'm getting a little confused, make sure I get my dates right here. Did staff get the memorandum from?
Got it on Thursday.
And when did the comments go out from us? 21st? But when, when did you guys receive the comments from us? I mean, they're dated the 21st. I don't know if you actually got them.
I don't know. I'd have to look back at the email that I got from the county. We worked through the comments and tried to get all the appropriate documentation from the fire department, responses from DA and R before responding back. But I believe everything like the drainage and the well aquifer could be clarified prior to a final plat.
Any questions, comments? Is there anybody else here to speak to this plat today? So, it's here in front of us. Does preliminary staff have anything else? Either that or move it with contingencies. Who speaks to the mic though, Mike? I mean...
Um, I would like a motion to continuance until the next planning meeting, so we can get some of these things nailed down and answered to staff satisfaction before we make approval or disapproval on the request.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Well, somebody's gonna have to second it or for discussion or...
Second for discussion.
All right, so, the move to continue to the next meeting, clarify these issues. Discussion on the motion.
Tanya, you sense on what documentation you need?
Yeah, I think Leah and I could probably work through, get the right plan sheets with the updates on them, don't you?
Yeah, we've got a whole week. I'm just, I don't know if we're gonna get a response from DA and R in a week. I don't know. That's the only unknown. Yes, we can revise the plans and the drainage, but the next middle date is Monday.
Well, I think that question, which pushed DA and R to get it, I mean, I think, I think probably the standard is you're probably just gonna have to apply for a new permit on that site, assuming that we don't have any issues. Like I said, I don't know if anybody, I don't know if anybody's using that aquifer close by where you know where they got quality issues. Okay, so other discussions on the motion?
So Erin, Erin texted me and she will, I will reach, she will reach back out to me tomorrow regarding the well. That's with South Dakota DA and R. Sometime in a meeting, she emailed that she would reach out tomorrow again.
Um, well, so you think Erin would give direction as to what needs to happen to clean this up?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm gonna just say, I can appreciate you wanting to save the cost. You know, sometimes you get ahead of these things sometimes. But, uh... But we gotta figure, the water system has to be figured out.
I agree.
Um, all right, other discussions on the motion? None, all those in favor signify by aye by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Attention, and I'm gonna vote no, but it's gonna pass. Um, the, all right, we'll see you next month unless, if you don't have a clear answer from the state, just get some direction. I mean, frankly, I'd probably be satisfied even if you guys just got a new permit application because those guys don't meet every month, so I think their next meeting is probably October. And what I'd hate to see is you get stuck where you can't get your notice done to get your permit for the new aquifer, 'cause I'm not sure they can let you just amend the source point. So, next issue? Okay.
Oh.
What do we got left here?
We do the continuance of 5E and then we'll be done with old business.
Okay, so 5E wishes to have a continuance to when?
Uh, September 8th.
Okay.
Will we continue to September 8th?
Okay, motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me just... Yeah, we're gonna take a break then. I know some people are here for this, the TIF discussion, that's gonna start as soon as we're done with, well, we're set for a public hearing. What do we got for? Well, let's take a break right now for 10 minutes, and then, and why don't you come up here and let's look at our calendar quick.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
All right, we've got, uh, we're waiting on one board member. If you're gonna speak for either, you're gonna speak for either of these, uh, uh, neither of these TIFs, if, uh, wanna make sure that you're signed in at the back, so we get your names down. Um, the, uh, going to, okay, limit, uh, speakers to three minutes apiece, so we don't have to go all day. Um, we'll do that timing. Up here. All right, um, we'll start with the proponent of the TIF, and then take comments from people after that. So, we're going to, on our agenda, we're going to jump over the new business and go to the public hearings then, starting with the public hearing that was set to start at three, uh, AR Ranch subdivision TIF. So, I'm gonna lay out a clarification on this. Um, you guys were here at our last meeting, and we went quite a way, long time, so I think I see some of the same faces that were at the last meeting. Um, after that last meeting, Commissioner Creed, uh, grabbed me and said, uh, the next day that, uh, uh, the motion was inadequate. Uh, we reviewed it at the commission level, there was some question, but we decided to bring it back to make sure that, uh, everything's, uh, is crossed and eyes dotted, so I apologize if I, I gave any misdirection on what was necessary for the motion at the last meeting. So, I'll recognize Mr. Hewitt then.
Well, so, not sure that there's anything new, uh, has developed. At, at the last meeting, we were, uh, criticized for a lack of transparency or accused of a lack of transparency. Uh, I would, I noted then and would again that this process began over a year ago, and, uh, there are minutes to reflect that. We came to the planning commission at that time and the, uh, and the commission and, or maybe it was just the full commission, but, um, discussed our intent, um, had quite a bit of discussion about the pros and cons, excuse me, uh, but nevertheless, we are, um, here where we are, and to remedy that, uh, with this last notice, we did send a letter to all those people that received a notice, um, explaining some of the concerns, um, and, uh, addressing the allegations that, um, you know, some of the, uh, misconceptions of how a TIF works and the, the intent and purpose of this particular improvement. And I, you know, I guess, I, I think when you consider, um, an area, uh, such as Southern Meade County, that has the potential that it does and, uh, but is now rather, to be honest, blighted and restricted, constricted because of lack of inner, uh, infrastructure, lack of, uh, transportation, um, and the safety concerns that that entails, in particular, this road. Um, one of the concerns that have been mentioned before were that, that the money used from this TIF would be to somehow reimburse for investment that's already made, and, uh, because we made the, the point that the development is nearly complete, and, and the funds to, to complete that have been private funds. And, um, so those are benefiting the residents of AR Ranch Estates. This improvement will benefit the, um, the general public. And so I, you know, I, I think it's, uh, it's a good way for the county to improve infrastructure without, uh, an expense outlay upfront. Um, we have demonstrated that the demand is there, uh, the development will, will be there and, and will increase the tax base. There's, without question. And when you consider Meade County and the geographic, um, hurdles that it has, challenges to maintain a county system, an infrastructure system as big as this county, um, you're limited to grow right in this area. This is the area that you can grow, and this is the area that you can increase tax base. You can't increase it measurably, uh, any, you know, any further out. So, those are, I guess, some of the thoughts behind this. I think the, the economics stand on their own. I think it makes sense for the county, it makes sense for the area, for the, the, the community as a whole, and this is just, um, I think it's, I guess that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Laura, did you have any comments?
Uh, no, I'll keep this, this fairly short, because we did spend a fair amount of time on this at the last meeting. Um, just echo what, uh, JD has said here. Uh, did want to bring up just a couple real quick points on, on one of the letters here that was, this is in no way bypassing any process of the county to do this. Um, all infrastructure will need to be bid, uh, reviewed by the county, and completed under state bid law, so this isn't necessarily just, uh, the developer being able to go out and do whatever they want. This is all, um, gonna be done under state bid law and according to the, at the commission meeting, there were a couple questions on the application itself, so there's been, you know, in the packet that's been updated, there's some clarifications made there.
Want you to go first, what those clarifications were?
Yeah, so, um, the, the clarifications were, number one, there was a question on the width of the streets. Um, that has not changed the, the language, I believe, in response to the forty foot was, uh, the county had asked that we pave forty feet from two twentieth street down each adjoining street, so we added in and just kinda clarified that that's what that was, and that we're not doing forty foot lanes, we're doing a forty foot street extension off of each intersection adjoining into two hundred and twentieth street. Uh, and then we cleaned up the, um, economic statement to remove the county tax.
Oh, there's a reference to,
Yeah, yeah.
Of a tax that didn't exist.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, those two items have been cleaned up.
Governor has his way, maybe the counties will have sales taxes. Um, the, uh, okay, uh, questions from the, uh, board of the proponents, any questions?
Sir, you requesting an economic TIF, correct? Economic development?
So, that's the, the state categorizes TIFs as basically either a grant TIF, um, uh, a low-income housing TIF, uh, which is a residential TIF, or economic development TIF. So, that's what this falls into. It's not a grant TIF, which is what Kyle said would, you know, we just get the money, spend it how we see fit. Uh, it's not low-income housing, it's an economic development TIF. You know, and, and there is, uh, certain areas, you know, an area blocked out for a commercial development of some sort, that hasn't been fully defined, uh, but, um, you know, density drives development, and especially commercial development. So, depending on the density, um, that, I, I can say, we've had some comments, um, from people's concerns that there would be some kind of a big box store there. There will not, we don't have the density to support that. It's not a consideration.
And was also your contention that, uh, the two twentieth road, due to the increase in traffic, um, is just becoming almost impossible to maintain it at its current quality level, based on what you project with the continued development?
I do. I mean, it's been a challenge to this point. Um, I, I think the traffic will improve, or it will increase. When you look at the TIF district, um, this brings in, uh, basically about another two hundred and eighty acres that directly joins two hundred and twentieth in some way or another, and, um, so, you know, and not to mention, uh, additional acreage, acreage that's accessible through that acreage. So, you know, it can be exponential, um, having a main artery through here. So, I, you know, I guess, we haven't made a formal request, but my request would be to the commissioners that the county would take over maintaining that road.
Because I'm looking here at economic development classification, and then it gives example of projects for economic development as for public infrastructure improvements for commercial retail development. However, when I look at the local TIF classification, it says public infrastructure improvements for housing that does not meet the affordable housing requirement. So, I'm kinda curious as to how do you define your economic development? Are you doing under twenty-five percent blight, or are you gonna be doing on fifty percent being used for manufacturing, industrialization, and commercial, commercial projects, under SDLC eleven dash nine dash eight?
Light.
Twenty-five percent blight?
Correct.
Okay, um, sir, I just drove out there yesterday. Uh, I, I've seen blight. Um, what is the definition of blight that you're using?
Blight, and, and this is, uh, allowable by the state of South Dakota, is undeveloped ground.
Undeveloped ground, or a, or ground that's been used for agriculture or for farming?
Correct.
So, blight is not, ugh, it's what you're saying it is based?
Uh, right, blight, blight is considered ground that has not been developed in this case. So, it, agriculture, um, undeveloped ground, that is a definition of blight, per, per a TIF justification.
I'm gonna be interested to see how Max puts in the minutes.
Yeah, ugh. Uh, you could drive around and find some definite scenes of blight, uh, throughout the county, but, um, it's a real nice area out there from what I can tell. Except a lot of it is agricultural based.
Right, and, and that's, that's not the, the purpose or the definition of the blight when, when the state is classifying TIFs. Um, blight, I know exactly what you're saying. When you think of the word blight, you think of, uh, you know, car yards and, and abandoned or, or buildings that are dilapidated, but that's not the case for, for a TIF definition.
We shall see.
Um, clarification on project expenses, so that section of two twentieth that you're talking about paving, is that the road that you've built with your own money?
Yes.
So that was part of the project costs that were already incurred, but it's not part of the recoverable claw. I mean, it's a cost you incurred for the development, but it's not a cost you're seeking to recover under this TIF.
Correct.
Um, the only costs associated with would be changing it to paving.
That's right, and improving the drainage and,
Yeah, yeah, the, uh,
Roads are, excuse me.
No, yeah, the ditching, yes, and the paving, yeah, it's all part of that paving project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, 'cause, uh, so I recall correctly, that mile of road didn't even exist, it was just pasture when you started this project.
That's correct.
Okay, other questions for the proponent?
The TIF has a projected payback of ten years.
What it,
It's scheduled for twenty, but it's projected to pay back in ten, based on the, the lots that are already, I hate to use the word shovel-ready, but that's what they are.
Yeah, state law, it says they can't exceed twenty. If they get paid off early, they have to terminate at that time, otherwise they terminate even if there's debts at the end of twenty.
That's right.
Ken, a, a question for staff would be, on the, on a, on a TIF, state allows up to twenty, can a county say that we're only gonna go for ten max, or is that a statute that is, Or is that a statute that is not overridden?
I guess I've never seen that. I'm not sure there's a prohibition against, you said in a shorter time period, but I'm not familiar with that statute.
Just law enough to know. Out of curiosity?
Yeah, if you know.
I've done that one time in Rapid City, where the city council...
Had ten years or whatever?
Ten years, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That, that doesn't mean it's legal or not, that's just what City Rapid City did, so...
(laughing)
So, I don't wanna go too far on that.
All right, well, so then, I guess it's theoretically possible, sort of. Um, all right, any other question?
Drainage?
Go ahead.
You have just one more, thank you. So, the, the drainage, is that a, a result of paving, or is that a deficiency from earlier work on it, or?
Well, I wouldn't say deficiency. Um, so, when this was constructed, it was surveyed and, uh, engineered, but, um, we had, um, we had some questions about drainage and, and so we went and re-engineered it. And apparently there are different formulas you can use. Yeah, I don't, I'm not an engineer, but they came back with, um, I guess, uh, suggestions that they may not be adequate. Now, I, you know, they haven't proved, they haven't failed yet, but we don't wanna pave a road and have it fail. So, that's part, you know, that's part of it. One thing, I mean, a road is basically base and drainage. That's, I mean, I don't know much about roads, but, uh, I do know that. And so if you get your base right and you get your drainage right, you're gonna have longevity. And we just wanna make sure we don't miss.
I, there was a transition between engineers. Second engineer came in, did a little broader study is my understanding, and said some of the culverts should be, be a little bit bigger, and then some of the ditching should be, uh, a little bit bigger, too.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And then there, the proposed drainage improvements, they're, they're quite significant. So we're going for some, from hill culverts up to some concrete boxes, just definitely more substantial.
Yeah, and so Long Branch was engineered, did the paving design, correct?
Right.
That's correct. Yeah, so they used a different one. Wasn't, but it wasn't, you didn't do the paving design?
No, I did not.
Okay, other questions? Now, let's go to our three-minute, uh, goes on this. All right, so, uh, as I stated, your comments would be for three minutes. Um, who wants to speak about this TIF, or just this TIF? Gotten feedback from people before. Come on up to the mic. Go ahead and identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Wazory. Uh, my name is Phil Anderson, I'm the chairman of the board of the city of Piedmont. Uh, could you clarify, who is the young man that was sitting here prior to me? What, who is he?
Mr. Chalor is a consultant for, uh, J.D. Hewitt's company.
We'd like, like to know who's speaking to.
Fair, fair enough.
I just wanna, um, talk about TIFs a little bit. Um, I'm sure there's a lot of ranchers and people who live in rural Meade County that would kind of resent their ag land being called blight. Um, I didn't find anything in what little I knew about it that identifies, uh, a ranch as a blighted area. Back to, uh, eleven-nine-eight, where it says fifty percent, uh, through the promotion and advancement of industrial, commercial, manufacturing, agricultural, natural resources development. It doesn't say anything about blight here. It does say you have to have fifty percent of it in that. Going with that. But what I would like to do is identify on, on the TIF subject, um, I've got, I had a conversation one time with a guy named, uh, Don Frankenfeld. Now, some of you might know him. He's the one that wrote the original TIF legislation. And this came up before, and here's what Mr. Frankenfeld said. Former South Dakota State Senator Don Frankenfeld can speak to the original intent of South Dakota TIF laws since he helped write them. "It hasn't turned out the way I had hoped," Frankenfeld said in a journal interview. "I see a TIF as a potentially useful tool in limited situations, but it is mal-morphed into a welfare program for developers that taps into the public treasury and is often regarded by city government as a free lunch. And we look at this as a free lunch for the developers." Um, our taxes in Piedmont, uh, through such things as, uh, ag now being taxed as, uh, production value-based, uh, we've seen our, our valuations have gone up, um, over sixty percent in the last five years. Our taxes from the county, our city taxes have gone up about twenty percent in the last five years. Our county taxes, our school taxes have gone up by over forty percent. And this is because of things like, um, developers coming in, buying ag land, keeping it as ag until they can develop it, and paying the ag taxes on it, and then doing what we're seeing here, trying to come in and, "Let's create some housing and, and see how much money we can make." It's called rent-seeking. And what, what I just heard was a couple of rent-seekers. Um, the one thing I would say, you guys are working for the Meade, for Meade County, trying to protect the citizens of our community. Um, any development in that corridor along Haynes Avenue is of tremendous benefit to the city of Rapid City. It doesn't do much for the city of Piedmont, the city of Sturgis, the city of Faith, or our rural community. Uh, housing brings more costs than it brings in tax revenue no matter what. I understand the county commission has problems with revenue, but to use TIFs, uh, for this purpose, to, to do what should be county, uh, projects, to use a TIF to do it, is exactly what Senator Frankenfeld was referring to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Come on up, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Bullion, and I'm a resident at A.R. Ranch Estates. I've done my best to summarize my key concerns and have provided written submission that contains significantly more detail, analysis, and supporting documentation than I can convey in three minutes. But it reflects extensive research and careful consideration of the fiscal, legal, and procedural impacts of the proposal. First, the proposal claims to fund new improvements to two-twentieth. The underlying infrastructure has already served its purpose in enabling development. Houses are built, lots are sold, and access has been established. Using a TIF to upgrade an existing road rather than unlock new development raises concerns about whether it meets the TIF outlines for a district. It's supposed to catalyze growth that would not otherwise occur. The distinction between enhancing versus enabling infrastructure is critical, and in this case, the improvements appear to function more as upgrades than as forward-looking investment. Second, the letter from Rafter Development misrepresents the fiscal impact. It claims there's no cost to the county. The reality is that future tax revenue from newly assessed homes will be diverted to the fund and not to county services. In Phase One, twenty-four percent of homes are still assessed only for land value. In Phase Two, sixty-nine percent. Once reassessed, over fourteen million in taxable value will be redirected away from county services like law enforcement, emergency response, road maintenance, public health services, and schools. Third, there's been a lack of transparency throughout. Despite recommendations at the July seventh planning meeting for direct communication, no outreach occurred other than the letter that was received July thirty-first. Fourth, the economic justification is speculative. Development's already happening without TIF support, and proposed commercial use lacks confirmed tenants or market studies to support the claim. Fifth, the financing structure prior, prioritizes private debt repayment, placing public funds at risk over a volatile economic climate. Sixth, the letter from Rafter Development claims the county will assume long-term maintenance of two-twentieth. The county has repeatedly and publicly stated it's not agreed to take ownership or responsibility for the road. This assumption is not supported by any formal action or documented commitment. If the county does not accept the road and the developer does not retain responsibility, the question of who will maintain two-twentieth street remains unanswered. This creates a serious gap in accountability and exposes residents to future uncertainty, both financially and logistically. Without a clear binding agreement, residents could be left with a road that lacks proper maintenance, oversight, or funding. This ambiguity is not just a technical issue, it's governance failure. Infrastructure built with public funds must come with clear ownership and long-term stewardship. Anything less puts taxpayers at risk and homeowners. Seventh, the TIF circumvents the county's procurement process. Normally roads are based on public need and competitive building. This proposal allows a private entity to direct scope and cost without the same oversight or prioritization. Eighth, I included a case study from Pennington County, where over thirty-seven million in tax revenues been diverted due to TIF. Their commissioners have raised concerns about transparency, administrative burden, and long-term fiscal strain. Meade County, with a smaller tax base, is even more vulnerable. I urge you to reconsider the proposal and uphold the transparent, need-based approach to infrastructure investment, one that protects taxpayers, respects county processes, and ensures long-term fiscal responsibility. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to share this.
Thank you. Before you came up, I know you were looking at somebody across the aisle, so let's, uh, come on up.
Wayne Wormstead, Superintendent, Meade School District. Um, not here in proponent or opponent to TIFs, as I see the economic use, but also the fact of what takes place to a district for that, so you're just aware of this. I received the information for TIF three and TIF four, and looked through that, and there's some, um, TIF four has a nice, short piece on page fourteen and fifteen, does a nice job explaining that, but misses a couple of points. As a district for us in capital A fund, when a TIF comes in and that increased growth, um, for our district example, we do not levy the max in capital A, about seven-point-five million dollars is what we'll be levying. So when that doesn't happen, we have that tax rules taken off, we actually see that spread risk or investment cost across more properties across our district for that. So it does have an impact across that. There's a little disclaimer in here on special education fund. We receive state aid by per pupil for them, and then we have a flat tax that we have to do to receive that. So that's one-point-two-six mils, and for every dollar we don't raise, we lose state aid. But if it is not on the tax rules, we can't receive, um, the extra benefit in special education. Um, General Ed is very, very accurate of how that's actually worked through that process with this. What I ask is that you look at TIFs, whether these are any in the future, um, consider the impact across that other taxpayers that has shifted. At the same time, um, I know there are benefit for many areas there. Currently, the Meade School District is number two in the state for the total number of TIFs in residential, only behind Aberdeen, where it had a Rapid City, and where it had a Sioux Falls right now, for number of TIFs across our district because of the number of tax and entities that can actually issue them. So...
County only has one TIF.
I know. But it's across all that, so it just, we're, we're speaking to everybody when the TIFs come up now, to explain the impact across that entire area.
Certainly I understand that, but it's not been a county issue.
No, I'm not saying it's county issue. I'm saying it's an issue of how TIFs are constructed and, and the balance in which we use them across the state as a whole. So, um, not opposed to development, and actually we look forward to it. Same time, it has to be done reasonably in which we can actually all work together to make things, provide those services for kids.
So your, your impact, that you spoke of, uh, of the TIF would be from municipalities that you have within the school district?
County municipalities, yep.
Um, it's great.
Across, that's all of them.
Sturgis, Piedmont, Somerset?
Somerset. Rapid City, if it flows into our area, too, with that, so. Little pieces like that. So, long-term, it does have an impact, so we're looking at probably, and I did not pull the economic numbers, I just did the residential, 'cause this is around a residential primarily and what it's gonna be. Um, so we're looking at forty million that's pulled off, um, for that, so when we levy our amounts across the entire school district, um, capital A especially, we have to spread that across everybody else that's not TIF. Our base is three-point-one billion.
Okay. Forty million out of three-point-one billion?
It's a small, it's a small percentage. But as it continues to grow, and I look at the TIF areas that are happening in, um, in Pennington County north coming into...
When you're using that forty million, you're using the forty million as, as build-out?
That is the build-out that's taking place, that, that's actually in the books for that. And then the length of the taim, of that twenty years for that, yeah. So, I think total with the tax deferment and everything else, I think it's near a hundred million across the county, our school district with that.
Including, that's the school?
Discretionary and everything else.
You're talking, you're talking just for these TIFs, or you're talking all your TIFs?
All of our TIFs.
Okay.
All of our TIFs, yeah. No, not just, not just this one. This one's, uh...
This one's very small.
Very small.
Yes.
But it's accumulation of all, over time.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Next.
First of all, I wanna thank all of you for taking on the job of being on the planning commission. You will make no friends, you will probably make enemies, and no matter what you decide, somebody will always say you did something wrong. But that being said, I wanna say that I believe both of these TIFs are on your plate prematurely. The Meade County Commission has not discussed its priorities that it wants before it establishes the formation of TIFs. We have had no in-depth discussion on this. I was surprised when I saw two-twentieth on your last month. I was even more surprised when I saw that tomorrow Haynes Avenue will be on the commission agenda. I have no idea how, what lands, how it was determined, what lands adjoining Haynes were included, which ones were not. I did not like the fact that the hundred-and-seventeen property owners that I understand from Tanya are involved in TIF number four did not receive a letter. I realize that, because I checked, that the state statute says it only has to be in the newspaper. I don't get the faith independent. I highly doubt there's even one or two of the hundred-and-seventeen landowners who got the faith independent and knew this was coming. Any discussion that we may have had, just casual discussion in the past, even like last year, or whatever, has all occurred prior to the legislature making major changes in how tax revenue is derived. We have spent the last couple of meetings trying to find out a nickel here and nickel dime there to try to balance our budget. Talbot, I, I heard you ask Wayne about the hundred million. Well, the hundred million probably would be what we would get in growth. And I believe that we need to all work together, all taxing entities. I represent the city of Sturgis. I know, as a citizen of Sturgis, the ramifications that excessive tax issuance has had on the bottom line of its city government resources. It has not been good. And keep in mind that not only did the city lose money from excessive TIFs, but the county also lost, as did the school district. And, once we start down this road, it is very hard not to stop. If I say yes for Macon, no for San, I have to have some logical, definitive, defensible reasons for doing that.
Hey, your time's up.
And I will talk more tomorrow.
Yeah, well, look forward to you, uh, voting to roll back the discretionary fund.
And I do like Talbot.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Next. Yeah. Okay, um, uh, so one of the things we've done is, uh, make it a little clearer for the planning board, is we, uh, we actually used the format suggested for TIF four to set forth a proposed resolution in this map. Um, I own land, and that will be included in TIF four. That's fine. I mean, frankly, it'd be better for me not to allow a TIF and leave it open for if anybody, developer wants to do anything out there sometime in the future. But, a lot of people own land in TIF four. That project's being done. We can talk about TIF four when we get to TIF four. That project's being done. That project's, we can talk about TIF four when we get to TIF four, and, um, and I'll lay out all my... TIF four, and, um, and I'll lay out all my positions at that point. So, we have a, uh, we have a proposed resolution that was proposed, uh, so everybody'd know the format of what we'd look to pass. So, um, we can do a motion and go to discussion, if you want to ask, or any questions, if anybody's brought anything up, we can ask that. Or somebody can make a motion, we can start discussions based on the motion.
You have a question. In TIF three, um, and we may have brought it up last time, but, um, when they have applied, when, um, when they apply for their TIF and it's an economic form, economic TIF, and if, what comes first? Do we allow the, this going forward, and if it's denied at the state level, it fails? Or do we wait until they get their approval, or what's the process?
I'm gonna ask if the proponents would come up and whether you can answer that question. My understanding that the state makes the final call on how the TIF qualifies, but I don't know if that's for sure.
You're correct. The state, the state will make the final call on what it classifies as a TIF.
But for, for us, if we're voting, do we vote on, you know, we don't know if it's going to pass or not, or if it's going, well, regardless, it's going to be some form of TIF, it just won't be economic?
Correct. The state can make the call and say, no, this is really a local TIF. DOR will make that determination, Department of Revenue will make that determination, is my understanding. That's correct.
Question. How many of us have to vote either yea or nay? Are we a majority only, or does it have to be all five?
It'd be a majority vote. Send this to the commission. Um, so.
Mr. Chair, what I understand is that before us is a resolution. Included in the resolution is the Planning Commission of Mead County recommending the Tax Increment Plan Number Three to Mead County Commission. So the resolution identifies the boundaries in detail. So what we're, from what I understand we're doing is we're considering the resolution, which would be, uh, making a recommendation then to the commission.
So, yes, so, nobody's made a motion on the resolution, the resolution because of all the detail was written out beforehand.
Right.
So, as I understand the statutes, is, this covers everything in the statutes, which primarily say to the county commission, or the, the planning, that you recommend the boundaries, or what the boundaries should be, the commission can change that, and that you recommend the plan, which I think should change. Um, the resolution is probably more in-depth than it needs to be to comply with those statutes, but more sometimes is better. Um, but we're not considering the resolution, that because I always made a motion on the resolution, it was a proposed resolution, so you didn't have to go through and try to, uh, read off all those legals.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, so we know what we're, what we're moving toward for or against.
Uh, for or against, and then setting the boundaries depending on the outcome of that for or against.
So the resolution is one comprehensive resolution, you could break it into two, or, you know, or you could do the resolution, uh, somebody could propose a resolution, and you could amend, or resolution could be rejected, or to be passed. So, that explained? You don't have to file the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Resolution is a convenience because of the-
Yeah, I mean, um, generally, we would want, well, so, yeah, generally, what I'd look for is somebody to make a motion, and you talk about why you're enbivalent, but-
Uh, Mr. Chair, for the purposes of discussion, I move that we adopt resolution for the Tax Increment District Plan Number Three as stated.
Okay. Is there a second? And will somebody want to make another motion, so there's no second on that. You have to do something.
Well, it's for four discussion purposes, and my, my parley pro background is you never make a negative motion, so.
Okay, seconded for discussion. All right, now, do you want to?
Well, I would, I would speak against the motion.
Because?
Uh, so I know that there, uh, I, I appreciate the conversation about the priorities, uh, and in this one, while it would certainly be, uh, good, I'm not sure this fits in the priorities in the overall plan, uh, overall need. Uh, there's another one that follows where the need is glaring, and I would suggest that we do need to be judicious in how we, how we approach TIF financing. And so, how, that's, that would be my, my concern.
So I, I want to mention the planning, because I do, I vehemently disagree with Doreen Creed's comments. Uh, there's been conversations with these developers for a long time, uh, fairly lengthy, because you can't do these conversations, it's not unusual, there's been two commissioners meeting with them over a period of time, they've appeared in front of the commission and talked about it. So that, the fact that she says this comes as a surprise, I don't know where that's coming from. Um, uh, it's a, uh, uh, I just totally disagree with it. So from the planning stage, this road's been built, I mean, maybe there's a question on whether this should be part of a more comprehensive pavement, whether it should wait till the entire road gets done, I'm for all that, uh, but I'm not shocked that these gentlemen are here, uh, it's been talked about a long time, it hasn't been- Um, a couple of the comments made about contracts, if you look at the contract that was drafted that they would have to enter into, requires them to bid it, they can't loan the money themselves, they have to go to a third-party lender, so it can't, this system's getting gained, so those controls exist. Um, now, we can all talk about whether there's different types of TIFs and TIFs should be used, I'm ready for that conversation, but, since there's been these accusations, this has been done behind, but it's never been talked about, those are just totally wrong, in my opinion.
I can appreciate that, because you've been doing this longer than I have, but when I read all the literature that was attached to this thing, I'm reading this preliminary steps. The Planning Commission for the county or municipality is required to hold a hearing on the necessity of a TIF district. Notice of the hearing must be established ten to thirty days before the hearing. The Planning Commission must also mail the notice to all taxing authorities to levy taxes or properties within the diagnose or the diners of the TIF. If the Planning Commission decides a TIF district is needed, the commission must make their recommendations to the county municipality, including proposed boundaries of the district. This is only the second time this stuff has come up in front of me, I hear people saying it's been talked about for a while, but I kind of feel like we're dealing with multi-million dollar things, we're opening up a genie's bottle that we can't put back in, and from just being out here in Romea County, I would not consider my pasture lands around me with my neighbors to be considered a blight.
Well, yeah, I, I do believe we've talked about this before, uh, uh, even at this level, you've been on since January, um, you do the notice when you do the notice what the statute requires, and that's when the notice is done. So.
The first, the first time I, the first time I even knew I was going to be touching a TIF was last meeting, and that's why I made the motion, no recommendation, because I didn't think I was supposed to have anything to do with it. I didn't know what my requirements were, nobody explained to me what was coming down the pipeline. Next thing I know, I get a four-hundred-and-forty-page document that lists all this for this TIF three, and it took a while to go through it all, and it's a road to nowhere, and there's might be a little bit of commercial development, we have no idea what. And when I drive that area, I don't see any blight, I see houses with pontoon boats and RVs. I think we have other uses for taxpayers' money for other people in the county than to take care of people who obviously have the means to take care of themselves.
I, I do wish to clarify that, my, my comments earlier was not a commentary on, on county planning, just, uh, from my vantage point, looking at things and looking at priorities, is all.
Yeah, and I'd clarify, Mike, I, I'm not trying to be flippant or anything, but, right, these things take time, they've been discussed. I appreciate that some people might be frustrated that state statute, how the notice goes out, but you comply with the state statute, and that's what you do. Um, I think your, your comment actually is a really good comment, is maybe we need to do a better, uh, maybe training camp for people coming on plan, planning to talk about, here's how variance is done, if you see a TIF, kind of here's how a TIF works, so maybe we need kind of a little good summary book for people coming on planning.
I would not complain about that, but I've had people sit at this table three or four or five times already to try to get a little project passed on a nine-acre piece of land. Now I'm being told I have gentlemen sitting in front of me who want to do a multi-million dollar thing, and they want it done right away. So, I mean, from my background in the military, I mean, we plan out when we're going to deploy for up to two years out. I would really appreciate it if I could have the same level of concentration for looking at these things from the mountaintop as well as climbing that mountain, instead of looking up saying, I can't believe, expect me to know all this.
Yeah, looks easy when you, when you're not trying to figure it out, doesn't it?
Well, I'm not substituting for the school, I'll go ahead and work on it.
Yeah. Further discussion?
Hell, his question.
Or Kyle.
Just, just a quick comment, and, and yeah, we recognize that, that we didn't have to send letters out for this last goal, but we, we wanted to send that letter out to all of the residents again, just to keep everybody informed, so, just making sure that, that that's noted, and I don't know much about number four, but number three, we did, even before this meeting, send out letters again, um, you know, to the need. The only thing I'd add in there is, is that, that there are improvements listed in the Mead County Transportation Plan, uh, that, that have identified, you know, improvements on two-hundred-and-twenty. It, that was part of the initial reason why we started some of those discussions, probably a year ago.
Yeah. Okay, other discussion?
Could I make, could I make a comment, or is it out of order?
If you make a very quick comment.
So we've talked about this before, and I appreciate that the county has budgetary constraints that none of us can appreciate and realize. To be honest, there are a few areas in the county that lend themselves to be developed. The improvement of this road is a small thing in the big picture. And yeah, somebody probably come and do it sometime, you know, um, I, I don't know. But it's, you know, it's another million-dollar deal, I've already put about six-hundred thousand in that road. And so, um, so I'm not gonna, you know, that's neither, not to say that it should or shouldn't be, but it does open up another area that the county can, uh, bring in to bolster their tax base. And that's really, to me, that speaks of the need.
Yeah, these are difficult discussions and balance, you know, as I think I've shared with this board, and I know I've shared with the other commissioners and everything, is I see, I don't like how some TIFs are done in some areas. Um, there's one TIF in Mead County. I was on the planning board when that TIF came through, and that developer wanted to do, to, to basically Haynes, to pave Haynes, fix a bridge, or replace a bridge that was, needed to be replaced, it was falling apart, and they wanted to pave the interior of his development, and, and the planning board recommended not following the plan, pave the interior, and the commission changed that. Um, I, I think that was a wrong decision. To me, TIFs make only, make sense when you're advancing infrastructure that can be used by the parties in the TIF, and will provide long-term benefit structure. So, um, and frankly, I had this conversation with Mr. Hewitt, because he talked about whether they, you know, it could be broader and include the development, and I said, I'd never support it. Um, and, and Commissioner Liggett said the same thing. But that, we thought we could support, uh, one, just to do two-twentieth, because two-twentieth long-term looks like it's planned to be a through road. And so, but, I mean, you know, I guess the thing I would say is, uh, you know, it doesn't need to be paved today, um, is there an opportunity to pave it? Sure. Um, but everybody has to vote their conscience on it, and if they don't like it because it's a developer TIF, they don't like it because it's a developer TIF.
Yeah, and, and I think if we would have, for me, I guess, if I would have seen this in the first phase of all the development that was going in out there, I know this was, you know, some of this is coming after that you've already had some of these roads done, it would have been a, you know, easier to swallow, so to speak, instead of coming in after the fact. I know that, you know, it's a tool to use, and I think the economic one is probably a stretch, so that falls under the local possibly, if the state goes for that, and I don't know all the ins and outs of TIFs of, you know, the fire district, the schools, and what's at stake outside of that scope. Is this the best, is the most, what's going to get the most value to the, the citizens in Mead County? Small, little island area here, or is it going to be, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
You know, you're looking at me, so I'm going to respond. This isn't for the, necessarily for the citizens in that little area, they'll use it, yeah. But really, it is for the benediment, betterment of the whole county, because you'll take the money from the tax base created by this TIF, and you'll spend it in-
Right.
-Inning, in Union Center, in Fairpoint, and, so that, that is a way for the county to maintain infrastructure that you can increase the tax base on. Every four-thousand-acre ranch has one set of improvements. Here, you've got a set of improvements on an acre, and you've got two-hundred-and-eighty acres that are in the district, and probably another four or five-hundred acres that are adjacent to those acres. So what we're talking about really is, is a long-term solution for probably about twelve-hundred acres of land. This is a main artery- This is a main artery, it's a, less than a million dollars, it's seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. You know, I just think it's worth doing. I think it's really, um, I, I think it provides a way, pardon the pun, but pays a way for the county to increase their tax base.
I always like bad puns, that's a good start, so. Um, all right, anything else? Okay, so there's pending motion, um, uh, adopting the resolution as proposed. Take a vote? The motion is to approve the resolution as proposed. Okay, so, those in favor? I'll vote aye. Those against?
Nay.
So, one to four fail, so am I going to make another motion?
I recommend that we, I, my move that we recommend to the commission, non-approval of the resolution that's before us.
Well, I mean, you're making a motion not to establish the boundaries because you don't find the TIF.
Not to establish a TIF, yes.
And then want you to make a motion not to establish the TIF.
Yeah, move that we recommend to the commission that, uh, TIF three not be established.
Second.
All right, discussion? Any and none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
C, did you say anything? Okay, and I'll vote against. Okay. All right, thanks, gentlemen. Um, like we're going to have a gravel road there for a long time, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, all right, uh, we're going to move to the second public hearing, it's supposed to start at three thirty, same, uh, three-minute commentary period to apply. Um, I'm going to start with, uh, we're going to get Toby Morris on teams, I believe, and he'll present the, the county TIF. Before we start with that, I want to address an accusation that was made against my integrity. Um, I do own land that's going to be in TIF number four. If number four is a project to pay back the county for a rebuild of Haynes, Haynes is falling apart, it's just eat, uh, everything. Um, because of development that's going in there and there's more development coming, we don't have zoning, we have no way to stop it. The county's been able to cobble together enough one-time money to rebuild that road. Now, I'll just, uh, my, my land I have in there with, I own with my brother, uh, that project's getting done. The question is whether there's a TIF to recapture that money so another project can be done someday in the future. So whether this TIF goes or not, that project's getting done. So the extent, somebody thinks that I'm trying to feather my own nest, I'm offended by that, but this board does have the power to vote me off, but I don't believe about conflict. So I'm going to turn to this board, under the statute, you can determine I have a conflict and I should not participate in this. So I'm turning to this board.
Is there something we should do in executive session?
No, I, we can do it right here, accusation is made right here. I mean, if this board thinks my integrity is such.
I don't think anybody here on the board has a problem with your integrity, it was brought up and.
I don't believe I do either. Well, I, I, I do not have a conflict, that is the determination that I have is I do not have a conflict. So, this board's comfortable, no one to make a motion, then we'll just start. And I'll leave the meeting. Vermont Mike? Make sure, uh, full name and position and what you're presenting on, please. Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Morris, please. Go ahead, Mr. Morris.
Okay, uh, well, thank you. Uh, Toby Morris with, uh, Collier Securities, uh, we, uh, are municipal advisors to city, county, schools, the state of South Dakota regarding anything from debt to tax increment financing, economic development, uh, it really in that, in that basis. And what we're presenting to you today is on behalf of the Meade County, uh, working with Mr. Rizorik here and the commissioners and the staff, uh, the past couple of months was to look at create a tax increment district and it sounds like you might have just had some lightly good discussion regarding TIFs. Uh, but by way of background, um, I've worked in the tax increment world all the way back to Governor Jankel, um, since revised some of the laws under Governor Rounds, Governor Dugard, even with Governor Knone, uh, as TIFs have evolved throughout really the past twenty-five years. And they, uh, they've become a, a tool, uh, for developers, but not only developers, but also for governments as a way to offset what really is becoming increasingly large infrastructure cost. And in some cases, you can have partnerships between a city, county and the developer. Some cases, you might just have the government entity take the role of the developer. So in the case of what we're looking at today, um, as the county, as we all know, counties are, are living and dying by their very last thread, there's very, very limited resources for them. Uh, you know, unfortunately, there's no sales tax, hopefully maybe this next year, there could be sales tax for them, but it really comes down to the county's grasping for any kind of revenue to offset, uh, these infrastructure costs. As we all know with Meade County, I'm a, I'm a West River kid, grew up in Squarefish, Sturgis area, you know, you guys are larger than the state of Rhode Island and does have many pressing issues. So what we did here for your North Haynes project, uh, and one thing I really want to stress is this TIF is a county TIF, it's for the benefit of the county and not any specific developer per se, it's a way to reimburse the county for that North Haynes, uh, uh, road that's being repaired, improved, for all the growth that you see that's going there. And so what I can do, uh, Mr. Chair, do you prefer I go through the project plan? Do you prefer I give you, uh, a global overview of it? Uh, what's the best approach that you guys would like to see from me today?
I, I think the overview would be good and then some questions probably from the board.
Okay, okay. What I'll do is I will share my screen here and I believe you guys have a copy of this and I'll just go through here. Uh, the project, uh, when we look at the boundaries, that's always the most important thing because we know here, this is the North Haynes Avenue and this is where the growth is occurring, will occur and frankly, is not going to stop occurring, uh, just because the nature of the sprawl and the way our population has gone, especially since COVID.
We don't have your screen up, Mr. Morris.
Oh, well, of course not, I'm not technically savvy sometimes, how about that right there? Is that? Super. So the first thing to really pull your attention to, the project reimbursement is the North Haynes Avenue. Any TIF revenue, the way this plan was designed, is only going to Meade County and no, no private entity. It is to offset those costs that have been bid and awarded on that part. And so everything on that revenue at this point, we're just here as a reimbursement back to this North Haynes Avenue. Uh, I'm going to skip around here a little bit just to show you the project, the, um, legal boundaries. Uh, let me pull this down here. And this is really in the green, that defines what the, the revenue will be generated from. We reference some housing developments in there more as an example of the growth that is occurring, not as an example of where that revenue is going to go back to. So based on that, we have that North Haynes Avenue, which is going to be that main artery. As we talked earlier, uh, funds are extremely limited for counties, so this is a way to recapture, uh, within this area. We took in some projections based on some growth, again, they're all projections at this time, but we would see within really about the next ten, maybe fifteen years, I'm going to scroll back up here, I'm sorry. Um, what we would see is that valuation growth, and I don't know if you can see it, if I need to enlarge it, where over the course, and this is at an extremely conservative three percent, I think you're going to get much higher than that, the way the valuation is, even though we're restricted based on the current legislation of what that growth is. Uh, but you're going to see a lot more homes that are going to start popping up there, hopefully maybe a little commercial at the same time. But as we project that out, we see the maximum of this being generated is about five point six million. Again, that five point six is directed back to the county and only the county to offset the cost that they've incurred at that point. Um, I do see other governments doing something similar to this, uh, mainly because you're forced to be acting in that role, uh, as a developer to maintain that road as the, the urban sprawl starts to go out further and further in case to this. So you're not alone by doing something like this. Uh, it is something we have already taken to Department of Revenue, uh, at a complete transparent basis, shown them, they've, uh, they've signed off on it, uh, they said, okay, we concur with all the legal, we've looked at the numbers and, um, they've given a preliminary classification that's come back to the county at this point. So I don't anticipate any issues with Department of Revenue, uh, legally, politically on this because it has been fully disclosed to them. As part of the TIF process, we're before the planning and zoning today and the rule of planning and zoning is to, are the boundaries contiguous? And does it fit within, under codified law, that you would then make the recommendation up to, uh, the county commissioners, uh, based on what your recommendation is? And, and maybe I'll stop right there, Mr. Chair, and see what questions there may have or concerns and I can address those.
Um, the, I think just to be clear, the, the, what type of TIF will it be, classification for DOR purposes?
Uh, it would be classified as local. Uh, regardless of the classification that DOR gives, everybody's always said, does the school general fund held harmless? And whether it's industrial, workforce housing, uh, which is a good thing, I think I should clarify, so even though in these boundaries that we have, um, I'm going to scroll here, if this were to be classified as workforce housing, anybody that built a house or sold a house within that green area would be subject to that first-time home buyer. So there are no restrictions on any developer going in and out at this place right now. Um, so it's not an overreach by the government by any means, but regardless, the school general fund is held harmless, uh, with any of the classifications on it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, sir, can you turn to, uh, Schedule Three, your economic development study and read aloud the introduction, please?
Schedule Three, attachment three or?
The, the Schedule Three page, economic development study, starts off with introduction, Meade County is considering.
Uh, what page are you on, just to make certain I'm on the right one?
I think it says Schedule's twenty-four.
Oh, there we go.
So when I read this and it says, "The governing body must determine that not less than fifty percent of the real property within the proposed district, but area will contribute to the general economic welfare and prosperity of the state by promoting and advancing industrial, commercial, manufacturing, agricultural and also natural resource development. Additional, the governing body must find that improvements within the area are likely to significantly enhance the value of substantially all other real property in the district." What else is, what, what is going to go out there if, involve an industrial, commercial, manufacturing, because all I'm seeing is more subdivisions going out?
That would be correct and the ability of whatever goes out there still requires the road. So I think it'd be fair to say, if you didn't have the improvements to that road, you wouldn't have access or you wouldn't have future development that would go. And so that was just one of the areas that we look at to say, okay, is this boundary going to benefit from this road? Uh, as opposed to, you know, maybe putting in five square miles, that's not the case. So we didn't overextend any of it, but rather looked at what was going to be improvements from North Haynes roads, directly or indirectly.
Understand that, my, my, um, well, the way I read this is that half of that green shade is going to be businesses, commercial industries, manufacturing. And I just don't see how that's actually feasible unless you've got people already in the pipeline saying, if you build it, we will come.
Uh, I, I can see your point, I can also say as somebody who's been doing economic development for thirty years in the state, infrastructure is our biggest impediment, right down to the roads. And if you can't start with a road, I think it's fair to say you wouldn't have anything. So again, it's, it is broad, tips by designer are broad. Um, and it's again, just trying to look at it, what you hear me say is the smell test, would you have the ability to do any of those without a road? And I think it'd be the road is one of the crucial arteries that make anything else happen.
And I travel North Haynes quite a lot and I actually kind of enjoyed a country drive heading into Rapid into all the congestion. Uh, so if we do improve this road, we do as you request. Um, like you pointed out, people are going to probably want to build more and more out there and it's going to look more like going to Colorado Springs to Denver.
Again, road's going to get rebuilt. That's. Yeah, I think, let me ask.
Can you turn on your mic, please?
Yeah, so the issue is, 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 um.
Is it going to be fifty fifty?
Yeah, Ms. Morris, you, you can't, when you do these TIFs, you can't, um, there's no set area that you can require or when, you can't, this is a local TIF, so it might all be, end up being residential, but it, there could be some economic development also. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct, y- you know, you're in an interesting position because you don't have zoning, so that would be what dictates what would go out there until, you know, such time you guys choose to bring in zoning, if you do or if you do not.
Okay, so the county auditor is required to impose an additional school levy on all real property with any impacted school districts to hold the districts harmless. Are we looking at an increase then in costs for operating our schools based on this TIF?
The, the school general fund is held harmless. Um, where schools look at the most, uh, the way the funding has changed in the last eight, ten years is more so on, um, numbers, they're funded on a per-student basis and that's where you see schools competing for those, um, uh, enrollment positions.
So for the, maybe say that again, for the, for the schools, that it, that it doesn't impact them, because we're, um, Mike has a copy from the, um, South Dakota Tax Increment Finance District and it has a definition on there of what a local TIF is. And, oh, we're, we're trying to weigh out what the impact of schools would be and you're saying there's no impact on the school district because of their current source of funding?
The, the local classification is a matter of where that increment is made up from. And so on the, on the local side, it's made up within the district as a whole, as opposed to if it's under workforce housing, the state essentially helps equalize that behind the scenes. But if you come in with workforce housing, you come in with that set of mandated criteria that you have to follow. So when you look at it from this base, whether, regardless of the four classifications, the school's general fund is always made whole, it's just where's it being made whole from? And in this case, if it is a local TIF, it's being made whole from that local. And in this case, if it is a local TIF, it's being made whole from that local area. And there's a, um, a formula that basically goes into of how that takes place, and it's, um, it, it is horribly complicated, but at the end of the day, it comes out to maybe a, a point oh one mill levy that would then be assessed district-wide of how that school's general fund, uh, remains whole.
Yeah, so...
I don't, I don't, it, it's, it's extremely hard to explain, um, and I sometimes don't do the best job of doing it, but those are the different classifications of how, uh, the state views the, uh, the classifications.
Right, so, maybe, I, I agree that the, the property tax has become very difficult just to how to envision it, because this, the, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Morris, but isn't, it's my understanding, let's say if the school district had a million-dollar budget, the fact that land goes in the TIF, their budget's still a million dollars, but that, the, if that TIF area would've paid fifty dollars of that, that fifty dollars is made up within the local area to keep that budget at a million dollars.
That is correct. Their, their general fund is always whole.
Right.
That is, that is correct.
The confusion to me always comes in, people talk about mill, and they think that's the thing, but what the state law really generates on is total budget. And so, that plays around with the mills a bit. Yeah, no, I think it, it might, I looked at it, and my information was it's all in Mead. Right. So, well, I do believe the superintendent said that they wouldn't, it's shifting, but...
So, the mill would, the mill would come out of everybody else's, but not the TIF district?
Yeah, it's the same thing, like if a nonprofit comes in and buys a piece of ground in the county, that, and it goes off the tax rolls, the budget doesn't go down. That, that part of the budget is spread across everybody else. In this situation, you get the, you get the improvements, the idea is that the improvements generate more, more revenue, and then those come back on the tax rolls.
Until it's paid off.
Yep. North Haynes is going, the North Haynes project is going to happen. It's actually even been awarded. The whole question on this TIF, is the TIF, is not if the project's gonna happen, is whether the county's gonna be able to recover the project from the development that's causing us to have to rebuild the road. That's what's driving this TIF.
Putting the dollars in that.
Well, no, the, the, the plan is to try to earmark those so the next time the money's available. Because, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Morris, I'm interrupting here, but just an example...
Oh!
Yeah, just, uh, I'm, no, I'm okay, I was just, the example is, this is a five to six million dollar project. I think the entire road budget for the county in a year is like nine million. The county only raises thirteen million some, I'd have to ask auditor through property tax, for the entire county. We have to maintain all the roads and that. Um, when you have to do a major rebuild on a road, it's, it's, it's tough. Um, so, I mean, that's what's, that's this, uh, that's the situation of this TIF. The Underwood Road has not been rebuilt. The Underwood Road actually had six miles, I think, turned back to gravel, because we can't afford to keep it up. We're trying to get the state to take it over and make it a state highway, given the traffic on it.
Okay.
But that has nothing to do with this TIF.
So, this TIF really... But do we know what percentage of the land is...
I, Tanya, any idea? I mean, I wouldn't know, you know, um...
We're known how much you can do.
Right.
No, that is a good question, because if there, if there's landowners there that will never relinquish their land to a developer to sell it, to, sell it off, then does that come back? I see where you're going with that.
Right, so, that's... Uh, there's some pretty large squares here that I'm assuming are... So, like, Sam, where I'm trying to go is that, are we putting stuff in the green box? Oh, that the ranching happens? Oh, for tomorrow?
Well, I heard Talbert say more than once is that seven years.
We should...
Forever.
And everything can change.
Yeah.
The bottom line is, what really perplexes me with regards to the size of this TIF is that it makes it sound like the Planning Commission has established the boundaries, and we approved the boundaries, and we had no methodology that told me how these things and the boundaries were set, other than another four-hundred date, hun, four-hundred-page thing that said, hey, this is the plan. I would love to be involved, hey, we need to come up with assessed values and stuff in order to subsidize, match these TIF requirements, and be a part of that thinking group, so I can sit up here and make an informed decision. Otherwise, I'm invading another country on false intelligence.
Yeah, so, um, those boundaries, that was Commissioner Liggett and I had input on them, uh, Mr. Morris had some input on them. The issue is this, um, on infrastructure that I've seen. The infrastructure drives development. Now, I see Mr. Jordan out there, Mr. Jordan is gonna live forever, so it's always gonna stay a ranch, but if, uh, but if he gets hit by a truck, I don't know what it's gonna be like ten years from now.
There's...
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, that might stay that area, but it's like you said, you, you don't know, and you generally, we know there is development going on in this area, you guys have seen it, that's included in this area. Um, and it was the best analysis of the area that's potential development area. Um, if you look, a lot of the housing is not included in it, existing housing, because that's not development area, that's not, there, there, they might've been the developers who beat, beat up the road, but it's the guys who come along next are really gonna beat it, you know, beat it up, so. Um, but yeah, some of this might, might never get developed, but the other, the flip side of that is, the land benefits from it, if for no other reason that you got a nice road to get to your back pasture, run your cows, cow track over, so.
Is there...
Well, and we, you guys can reset the boundaries, I mean, that's part of this process.
Is there any way to attach, if any of these things are... So much for the...
Um, I've never, I've, I've not seen a county do that. There's likely theoretical ways you could do that. I have not, are you familiar, Tanya, you've done, have you, does Spearfish even do that? Um, yeah, I think theoretically, there's ways to do that, there's, you know, but, um, I just don't, I, I think they're so complicated and convoluted and difficult that they don't usually work very well. And I'll just say this, this is complicated stuff. Mike's had really good questions and thoughts, see, I mean, there, it's just difficult.
Being able to, as a board, under...
Yes, sir.
You know, obviously, you said with the... I think we should drop off this, uh, there, maybe this one, without any good reason.
Yeah, so, this is a public meeting, and we have to get to the public comment. You have to go through the public comment. You can continue the meeting, and the board has that power to get the additional information, should you so decide. But you have to go through the whole, we can't do it at this level. I mean, we should probably let Mr. Morris finish his presentation. Um, so, uh, I don't know, Toby, I'm sorry, I've got, I kinda got it off, uh, track there.
Um, I, I, I think probably in conclusion, what, what has happened to counties, and Mr. Zoric explained it best, you have, what, a ten or twelve total million dollar budget. Counties have been stuck since the property tax freeze in nineteen ninety-nine. Good or bad, regardless of the politics, you gotta look at the economics of how and what's happened to their budget. And so, what I like from a public finance side is this helps replenish some of the cash that the, the county has expended. A county's taken on three and a half million of this road. They can't borrow money for road. Codified law doesn't allow you to go out and borrow for the road, let alone do you have a source to repay them. So, they're constantly being caught in this vortex that inflation goes higher, they can't save enough to accommodate the current roads, the existing maintenance, and so forth, and it's like walking in a drizzle, never know you're getting soaked. Um, I don't think there's any better organization to spend taxpayer money than a county or a city. So, this is directly going back into the benefit of the county, which can then use these funds to further offset other maintenance projects in their extremely large, um, county area, because they're replenishing, they're repaying themselves for these costs incurred. The only other way a county can generate new revenue is an opt-out. And those are horrible words to say, and the chances of ever passing one, not that you would want to, are, are extremely slim. So, looking at it from a public finance side of things, this is only gonna help the county for some of their tremendous future needs that they're gonna encounter.
One clarification I'd make, Ms. Morris, I, I believe the county collects about twelve, thirteen million in property tax, our total budget's about twenty-four. That includes other fees and everything we include. We spend about nine on roads, as year in, year out, just to keep them, just to keep them passable and gravelled, um, without major construction projects, so. Um, so, you, did you have anything else, or did you say in conclusion, Mr. Morris?
No, I would, uh, rest right there.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, appreciate you making an appearance, I know that, uh, due to some items, you had to be out of state from family issues, so. Um, so, we're gonna go three minutes for anybody who wants to come up and talk about this one. Um, and so, uh, at the last one, let everybody go just a little bit long, but I'm gonna try to keep it to three minutes, because we still have other things on our agenda even after this public meeting, so. So, looks like Mr. Jordan might be coming up. Mr. Jordan, are you...
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
How are you? Get all, stay alongside you so we get the right...
Yeah. Kick him hard under the table if necessary.
Yeah, thank you, John Jordan. I would be one of the landowners in the proposed area. Um, I'm certainly not opposed to thinking outside the box, okay? And so, it, it's just, everything's coming pretty quick at us. I mean, I've had less than, is it even twelve hours to study this? So, um, some of my comments, uh, maybe seem a little funny. I have talked to Toby this morning, and he didn't acknowledge that, but, uh, so, we're just trying to figure out what's going on. So, real quick, it'll be, maybe I lost my questions already. Um, uh, they're just questions, and I only got three minutes, I'm almost done already. Um, we have roads in Mead County and in joining, joining counties that already have been turned back from asphalt to gravel. And so, it, that, it's no big deal for us. Um, I'm not sure if the TIF is gonna be the way to fund maintenance work, but if it is, I'm looking at a big TIF out in, uh, eastern Mead, Mead County, okay?
In New Underwood Road, you mean?
No, 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 further east.
Yeah.
We're, we're the largest farmer in South Dakota. How was land selected to be in the TIF? That's the million-dollar question that I think may need some more time. I'm just saying. Uh, amount of interest, I believe if I understand it right, are we paying interest or none?
None.
Okay, thank you. Um, TIF number three, people receive notice, I realize you've already said it's not required by state law, but might've been a good idea.
Fair enough.
Economic development statement, Toby and I have talked about it, uh, I think Mike talked about it, it's a stretch, okay? Um, um, that's probably the end of my three minutes. If we go to the map, um...
You got one left.
One minute, thank you. Um, going back, and I feel stronger now about the, the bypass road than I ever have because of some of the criteria used in the design for the, the, uh, roads. So, back, uh, let's see, it'd be generation three, I'm four, seven's on the ground and working cattle, um, but only since eighteen eighty-nine. Um, they, they used to go out to the west, okay? And that's why you and I went around and around on that. When you gotta get out, you gotta go to the west. The one parcel of land I would prefer to be withheld for a TIF for the bypass road.
Where, where the...
Where it goes across me.
Right, where the study showed would be the most logical place to put a, a east-west connector.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so if, um...
You see what I'm saying? I'm, I'm not again, I, I always kind of assumed it was gonna be a TIF-type deal.
Yeah.
Okay? And then, um, again, uh, the, the, the way the road got ruined is from the people that are out there, um, so I'm not sure that they shouldn't be included.
Yeah.
Thank you.
By, you mean by the developers are already developed?
Well, the, the biggest complaint right now is the intersection of Peterson Ranch Road and North Haynes.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's bad.
And, and that's, those people are out, they're not in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that. Next.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. My name's Dennis Gorton, I'm a member of the North Haynes Volunteer Fire Department. I've been a member there for forty-nine years. I was a member when the North Haynes Fire District was formed many years ago, back in nineteen eighty-two. I'm not here to speak against or for the TIF. Couple of quick questions that we, as the district and fire department, would just like straight answers to. I don't know how much taxable valuation or how much tax revenue is being generated off this proposed TIF at this point, haven't seen any numbers or valuations. Um, so, my questions are, as I understand TIFs, we would maintain what we're currently getting for tax revenue, and let's, we'll just arbitrarily pick a number and say that's a thousand dollars, I'm just, it's a number out of the sky. We would re, continue to receive a thousand dollars, how long is this TIF projected? Twenty years? Okay, so, we would receive a thousand dollars for the next twenty years, am I correct?
Well, it depends on the pay, if it gets paid earlier, it comes off earlier.
Well, okay, but it's projected twenty years. I understand if it's...
So, long as...
Yeah, if it gets paid back in ten years, it'd only be ten years, okay? So, we don't get any benefit, uh, special districts, fire districts do not, are not protected like schools are. So, we lose out on any future revenue for the next up to twenty... So we lose out on any future revenue for the next up to twenty years. Is there a projected valuation at the end of twenty?
There is in the, um, TIF study.
Yeah, we have not seen, we just, we were just notified of this about ten days ago. Our district got a letter, um, you know, saying, "Hey, here's the meeting." So, we're just trying to get some background information and stuff. North Haynes has provided their fire protection and first responder to that for, since day one. And yes, there's a huge amount of growth, uh, as Mr. Jordan said, such as the Golden Valley and some of those, um, are apparently out of the TIF, and they're the ones that generate all the traffic. But I'm not here, I'm not speaking exactly for the district or the fire department. Just a couple of quick questions. We just wanted straight answers for.
Yes, and, and sir, I sympathize with you, 'cause I do have the same questions, and I, um, I had brought it up last time with, um, the one previous here, that TIF three, of how that affects these, these, uh, fire districts. I too firefighter here in Sturgis for twenty-five years, and we don't have a fire district here in Sturgis, but I know, you know, this affects you. And if you put in another five hundred homes out there that you have to protect, and you don't get any value, that, that's a big problem. So, I'm, I'm learning along with you with this process of how this affects everybody in the grand scheme of things.
And I don't think anybody would argue, I don't wanna run into my three minutes, but I don't think anybody would argue that if you rebuild the road as you, uh, when you rebuild the road, uh, that, yeah, more development's gonna be driven that way. There's no question about it. And, uh, as that happens, then our, our expenses from the fire department increase too. Our number of calls go up, et cetera, and et cetera. So, that's the way it is, I'm, but I just wanna make that very clear on the, on that point.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. It looks like, looking at this, the base currently is about twenty-two, I think, million? Um, is existing in that. Uh, oh, there, there's, and the thing is, development's gonna happen out there. I mean, we have to rebuild Haynes, 'cause we have to rebuild it. Um, but development's gonna happen out there. There's no stopping it.
Absolutely. And when you're going down that road at sixty miles an hour in a fire truck...
Now, you get a good...
Getting that, that bad spot at Peterson Road, yes. We all know where to dodge around.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know...
I know, it's kinda a little rollercoastery, you know?
Yes, it is. Although it's better than it used to be.
Yeah.
So, like I said, I've been driving it for forty-nine years, so...
Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time, and thanks for being on the fire district, so. Okay, next. Eric, come on up, Bob.
I guess one of the questions I...
Bob, identify yourself on the mic, would you please? Thank you.
I'm, I was, uh, chairman of the North Haynes Fire Protection District for thirty-five years. Uh, I too was there when the district was formed. Uh, and I own land on the east side of Haynes Avenue, right next to John Jordan's. Um, I think, but are, are the levies froze at this level forever? Or it's just the amount of money?
So, the state law freezes your gross budget, throws it, and it can only increase three percent or inflation whichever's less. Same, the law's the same as when you're on county commission.
Does that go for the levy too?
The, well, the levy, you set the budget, so the, the...
Like the...
The freeze is on the, on the total budget, not on the levy.
You know, the, North Haynes levy on my property here is point seven six three.
Well, I, you have to ask the fire guys what, what they've done with their levy. I don't... Yeah. Okay, point nine zero, it would sound like what the levy is, but again...
It's gone up a little bit. Uh, this is on the ag land that I own.
Well, so, ag might be, I don't know if ag could be lower.
Um, you know, and the schools is, um, point, uh, four point seven oh eight and nine point one two four. Um, if those levies don't ever go up, what's gonna happen to the value?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
The, the amount of tax money that's collected, those levies are gonna have to change too, to go with the increase in development.
Totally. You know, the cap, what by the state, is on budget, not levy, as I understand it. Um, so, like I said, back, just like when you're on the commission, so, you can only, it can only go up, the whole budget can only go up three percent or inflation whichever's...
Right.
Plus growth, which is usually a small component, but, so, it, it's a difficult situation. A lot of small districts find them...
That's gonna hurt the school district, it's gonna affect the fire districts, it's gonna...
The, the issue of...
The public library?
Yeah, but that, it hasn't, it doesn't really have any, well, we can talk philosophically, but, um, what else, Bob? Your three minutes about...
Oh, oh, okay, uh, you know, I got two more generations behind me too, so...
Well, I'll let you and John fight that one out, so...
You know, I don't think our property's gonna sell either for quite a while. Of course, that could all change. I'm, I'm getting old enough that I'm not gonna be around forever.
Bob?
It'll be my kid's decision.
Is there any of your property isn't even, is in, isn't even in this TIF boundary, is it?
Yeah, it is.
Is it? Is there one piece of that?
Right, right west of, that little piece is, it's one of the smaller pieces on that map.
Okay, I'll take a look at that then.
It's only a hundred and eighty-nine acres, but it's right across the road from Weston Heights.
Okay, I didn't know you get, went all the way over there.
Yeah, well, uh, so I'm kinda concerned about what's gonna happen with the property tax too, so...
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Bob.
Guess I used my three minutes.
Yeah, uh, I let you, 'cause I talked part of it, I let you go four, so, um, next, uh, next person? Okay. I'm gonna close the public meetings, since we don't have any other speakers coming forward. Um, look to the board, uh, for discussions or motions. Now would be a time you could make your motion if you wish to continue and see.
I'll second.
I'll continue to the next meeting.
A little more time.
Sure. Yeah, um, yeah, I think, uh, but, so here's the thing, I mean, I could talk about the boundaries. I just can't talk to everybody at one time, 'cause otherwise violates public meeting laws, so...
And the other question would be if we can notify these landowners that it's affecting? I know we don't, statute doesn't say that, but just to get, um, cordial.
Well, it, that'd cost you a couple thousand, probably. It's a guy that go out, I mean, how do you, how, how would you wanna do the notification?
We just do first-class mail.
If you just do just first-class mail, I mean, you wouldn't have to...
What was that last time, Max? Thirty?
Two thirty and a couple days of your time. And perhaps we could just compromise and say, any landowner with over a hundred and sixty acres or a hundred acres, just so the big landowners that would, might have the, might have the most interest?
School district, it's coming.
Yeah, well, yeah, and just clarification, the district, the school districts are, are held harmless. Um, the other districts, a road district or something like that, or a fire district, uh, is not, but... The school won't receive them from the state, they'll receive a local match. So, I, I don't know what... No, that's fine. Um, yeah, so, a way to look at this, I think, of, this, this TIF with the already existing TIF that we have on the books is less than one percent of, far less than one percent of entire taxable base in the county. So, it's, uh, Golden Valley, that's...
Golden Valley, yes.
Yes.
And Hig.
Um, I'd have to look, ten probably years for sure.
Here, we'll look that up. About ten years, eight to ten.
So... Question, I'd have to ask the auditor for an update.
Yeah, I don't have an update on that one.
And get some of those...
Well, since this is a public meeting, you have to continue it to a certain date, so I would say, I recommend that the, the, um, discussion be continued to three o'clock at our September meeting, and then, I mean, I...
Go for that.
And then, I can work on, and down with groups of two or something like that, tell you what I know about it, and we, maybe can coordinate with Mr. Morris's office if you have a couple of questions there.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, there's been a motion, was there a second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, motion is second to continue this to September, the September meeting at three o'clock.
I would, uh, certainly support the continuance. Would really, uh, encourage us to, to study this out and to consider those items that, that we've talked about. I, I would say this, this is a very important project.
Okay. Any other discussions on the motion? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion continue, it's signed by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody nay? Pass unanimously, we're gonna take, uh, ten minutes, um, and then we're gonna go back to new business as soon as we come back.
Thank you, Toby.
Uh, Mr. Morris, if you're still on, thank you very much for your time.
You bet, you bet. I'll just coordinate with you and, uh, the staff, and we'll make sure we get all these questions answered for you.
Green box.
All right, I'll let you guys go.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Max.
See ya.
See ya.
Um... What, what was, uh, what's left on, uh...
Oh, yeah.
I would sure like to take a look at the, uh, project itself. I don't know if... Project review.
I think so.
Good. Large landowner.
Right.
Good, are you? I'm hoping I'm doing okay for you. I'm, I'm... We'll be parsetted or beyond. I just...
Happy, I'm the same thing with her.
I was somebody who was like a Rockefeller. I'm pretty good at passing out what's stupid, you can just ask Max. Robert, not done yet.
My goodness, I got four things left.
Now, my kid's here to eight o'clock, so as long as I could stretch this out for another two and a half hours, you'll kill me. But my wife will be happy, because I'll be proud to go myself.
Tell you what, if we're still here in two and a half hours, it's not really wrong. Yeah, I haven't seen it either. I know it's, like, large, you can drive it, but it's been out there. I haven't been out there in a long time, but they are nice houses. It's a pretty area. Busy, not one, uh, mind having our town back though.
The bikers are great, but it's nice to...
Yep. It's fun though, it's like Olympic watching. It is fun though, it's like Olympic watching.
Gary? Where's this? They don't have to show up tomorrow.
There's really nothing to it. Really, I, I, for us to act, I, 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 really not, there's nothing to act, there's nothing to act, a week and a-
When you have to come anyways, you want to go to your 15th.
Yeah. Sure, but, um... We're so stupid, we're learning all this stuff. Still wanted people to know that you sat here.
I know, I gave him a hug about it, he's here, does not look like that.
Yeah, close your, close your blinds.
No, because-
I don't, I don't- Like, yeah, I don't think it can, I mean, that's, you can ask a lawyer, but I'm not-.
Alright. Oh, I lost her. I really did lose her. Oh, I really lost, uh, boss lady. Kind of, kind of go over.
I won't make any more stupid comments. No, I almost saw you snicker. I'm eating that, buddy.
I couldn't, I'm like-
Alright. Tanya, Tanya, you ready? Just can we get through this? Um... Alright, let's, um, let's get to, go back on the agenda to new business, six A preliminary plats. Lots one, two, and three, four, five, well lot, Bulldog Estates.
Your time and yours.
Shannon's show, Shannon, where were you during the TIF stuff?
Jeez. You guys wanna talk about TIF?
No.
Okay, so, this one Bulldog.
Yes.
Okay, so Bulldog Estates, we have, we're proposing to do a four lot subdivision here. This is five, yes, and then, um, so this is within the, the Bulldog campground area, obviously, so... So, when Tanya talks about number five, um, what we're gonna do there is, 'cause we did have, it's a really, really old lot two, and at first when I was looking at this, it was, I was, had the, the view that it was a, an actual old government lot two, but it's not, so... So, what we're gonna do is plat that remainder, but talking with the owner, um, just to clean the whole thing up, we're gonna take that portion and just plat the other campground area all into one lot.
So-
So, if that makes sense.
So, I, what you're saying is, you're gonna, we're gonna have to see a new preliminary plaque, 'cause you're gonna take lot five and take that remainder and plat it all as one.
Well, if, Tanya, yeah, if we're gonna have to re, yeah, the, the other portion.
This portion.
Yep, yep.
This is gonna now go into lot five.
Yeah, we'll just make that all into a lot five, yes, yep, so.
So, so, we're gonna have to see another preliminary plaque.
With, well, yeah, if you see this, it just has a different line work.
Well, yeah, well, you're gonna have to include twenty point four eight zero more acres in the lot five.
Yes, yep, yes, absolutely, so, yep.
Do you have a question, Sam? You got the laser now, so-
Yeah, I'm not gonna point it.
Yeah.
Go back to the aerial.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a, that's an error in the, in the GIS, um, 'cause we looked at that previously, um, 'cause there is the plat, uh, the lot two plat in green, um, that old lot, it actually does go right up to the, um- the railroad right away, and then, then we have the H lot for, for the interstate there, so... It does go all the way up to the, the picture that you're looking at, that line does extend over, as the boundary, as part of the, the actual boundary, so... Yes, yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and I think it's just overlay between the, the highway interstate lots and that, like I said, that old lot two is really old from back in the thirties or forties era, so, but, so...
So, what's gonna be the water on this?
So, we're, they're proposing to, um, they're gonna drill a new well where the well lot is for the campground, as well as the, the additional lots, so... So, the idea would, for the idea for the preliminary plat approval, and then, once that was, would be accepted, or accepted by you guys as the board, then, then that way, the improvements can be made, which the well lot will be part of those improvements, so...
Okay, but, I'm not su-, so, do you have a water plan, or, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure I'm following you, Shannon, so, you're saying that you're gonna get the water figured out if we give you the approval of the preliminary plat?
Yeah, yeah, so, the idea would be to drill a well, if we get a preliminary plat, it'll never go to a final, obviously, until we can get everything in place, but, the talk in the area, that, that they do wanna drill a, a new well, a deep well, that will benefit, uh, these lots, as well as the, as the existing campground, so... Yes, yep, that's correct, yep.
I think, yeah, sure.
Um, we do have water on the property now, that is, community water system, already.
Oh, is it a licensed system?
It is, and Al Sage takes care of it. There is water available there, I don't like the thought of using it for this, it will work, but I want to improve all of this to put that new well in, so, if it's a problem with the well, we do have water there available already.
Um... Yeah, I mean, Al might be able to kinda just give you a rough, here's, it could, this well would work with the following modifications.
He, he said it would work just fine. And I can get that from him if you need it.
Yeah, and, and we went over that, but, I mean, my part for a plat, I just didn't wanna show a well lot over here, you know, all these easements coming over these four lots, but if the real idea is to drill a good, you know, a different well, and propose good well there, you know, if that's what Aaron's gonna do, then, then it doesn't make sense, but, but like Aaron said, we do have a well on site that, that we could show to, to provide water for the lots, so...
Staff's thought on not having any kind of preliminary water design?
Don't have, yeah, I would, I would want new plat, preliminary plat to show the new lot extension and anything, and abilities. Uh, the well, if we're gonna have a same requirements as everybody else, I guess, they're inconsistent, that ordinance thirty-three seven, gets submitted along with the preliminary plat.
Yeah, I mean, you could probably show where the water lines are gonna go, and maybe even a preliminary, if you use the existing well lot or do something, but, and then, if you wanna change it before you get to the general, but I, I'm a little worried about just consistency, that we can generally want some design on the water system-
Mm-hmm.
-for we, you know, push through a preliminary plat.
Yeah, and I just did, without the well existing, you know, I mean-
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just don't wanna show it one way, and then, um, with the easements, and then all of a sudden we have a plat with easements crossed it, with water line that, the water line not even there, not in existence, actually from the new well lot to the new lot, but, um... So, that's the part I was looking at, so...
Then, reviewing the street plans, um, the street plans are only designed for twenty-four, what, twenty-four, twenty-four foot wide roads, or three to one ditches, with the ditch slopes fine, but I need twenty-eight foot, so the road plans will have to be redesigned, um...
You are good with the ditch slopes? Okay.
Um, the driveways, from my understanding, talking to Aaron, the driveways, the one furthest east was already reconstructed by DOT, they're, they're both driveways are right next to each other, I don't know if that would be a concern to the board, um...
Off this little frontage road, you mean?
Yeah, so, there is no approach permits of record within the system I have, so these two approaches here would be the ones that are really close, that line up with South One Thirtieth, and then you're gonna have the new cul-de-sac entrance on this one. So, we do-
Is there a reason to maintain both approaches coming off of that area?
We use them for entrance and exit, especially during rally, uh, they're, they're not big enough to run that many campers, both directions, so, that's why we use both.
We don't, we would not need a variance on anything like that, if they're already existing, correct?
I don't, I don't think so, I think what, as long as we-
Know what it is on the plat.
Yeah. On board. What else?
And then, um, Aaron and I are working on our disturbance permit, um, getting all that up to speed, um, he had done some dirt work, um, I will get him all that stuff, signed.
Mike, you need a bigger screen. Um-
I'll be building one on the lot one, I have friends that would like to buy lots and build personal houses, they're, it's not rentals, it's gonna be for us to live in. Yep, it is.
His wife started living in a camper, so...
Yep.
That'd give me a-
This here?
Um, yeah, Brandon made some adjustments, so we must have turned on, those are just radius line layers, yeah, that, just to show the radius of the curve, that should have been frozen, so, but... What happened is your field guy makes, uh, AutoCAD ju, changes. But he is capable, he does drafts, so...
Gotta be revisited.
What's that?
You're gonna have to bring back, 'cause you're gonna have to, you know, even change your lot lines to include more area rights.
Yep, for that one, if the road plans need adjusted.
I say everything gets brought back out in a, a final, or as a full preliminary plaque.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need a full preliminary, I think though, I wanna see something on the water that, and, 'cause, and where, at least the lines are gonna go from, um, the, uh, along those lots, so, you know, that probably is not gonna change, no matter where the water's coming from, and whether we need any easements. Record, I don't know if you're thinking about putting it in the right of way, or you're thinking about putting them on, just inside the lot lines.
It'll be inside the lot lines, electric and water both.
Yeah, I think that's always the best way to do it, because, you know, you're gonna dedicate that, and then, twenty years from now, some county could tell you not, you can't put your, you gotta get your private lines out, um, so, and it's a different commission. Yeah, yeah, seven years forever, and well, you know, I'm in my seventh year of the county, being on a county commission, so it's felt like forever. So, um...
So, I would suggest Shannon and I and Aaron all meet and go through the preliminary plat, and just make all the adjustments of what's required.
Other comments on the plat, so they can address them when they're sitting down.
Um, I got a question, just for the board, our sake, so, what is the board's thought on the well lot itself? The idea of that improvement, rather, or do we come from the well, the existing well and bring water over, or for now, for this plat, for the lots, or...
Is your intent is to drill the well?
I want approval before I spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a well, but it's, it's impossible for me to recover that, so... If, if for your benefit, we use the existing water well to show you where we tie it in, and it makes it easier for your purposes, I'll apply for the water when we get things figured out, and we drill a well later, it can be tied into our water that we have now.
Yeah, and you have all, you got all your testing on your current well and everything, and, you know, we, you know how much it produces, and-
Yep, yep.
'Cause you're gonna have to design to production, too, I don't, I'm assuming it's a decent producing well, if you're using it for the-
Um, we have cisterns system, and this is why I want to do this, is to get rid of that.
Sure.
So, it, it's been tested, Al Sage does it every month.
Yeah.
He knows the, the volumes and everything, so, we have lots and lots of reservoir, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, let's get that figured out, at least as a basic, is it thought you're gonna put the well at some other location, a new well?
Yeah, on the lot, or the plat there.
So, where's it at on this lot?
Uh, about right where you're, yeah, down a little bit, you're about right there.
That well lot there is not the existing one that's, uh-
That's for the new well.
Well, yeah, so you should be able to do your design going off the new well, assuming it comes out, and then- where, if you have to feed back through, you could-
The intention is to tie it all together, and it will backfeed from the new well, and will cap the cisterns off, when we get to that point, but...
Okay, so, gonna continue the next meeting? Yeah. Well... Okay, um, how about a motion to continue it until, uh, the meeting until planning and applicant believes that it's sufficient, that they're ready to bring it back?
I move we continue till brought back by the applicant.
That way, if you run into something-
Fair enough, yep.
We don't have to have you come in September just to continue again. Alright, moving to second to continue the matter until applicant, uh, working with planning, decides it's time to bring it back. Any discussion on the motion? Any none, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, so that passes unanimously, go to the next one, the Carols, or, uh, Earls? Earls? Alright, and we've, this is one we had a couple of variance requests on, so, everybody should be somewhat familiar with it. Um... We had the variance on the, the, not dedicating on the east, and then, the, recommended the joint, uh, approaches, uh, and then not to have to build a twenty, that road, that section to twenty-eight feet.
Right, okay, so, plat itself consists of, um, two lots over nine acres, um, as you can see, access will be shared between the shared access approach, um, that approach has to be built before the final, and the, and the existing removed, um, so... I think other than that, it's a pretty straightforward plat, so, we do have, both lots will be using, just, I mean, they will be using, um, Bear Beat Valley water, um... We do have, right, with Dennis, Bear Beat Valley water.
I need a letter, though.
You're gonna need a letter, um, uh, I think we can move it forward contingent on that, because they're both over nine acres, and they could sink their own wells anyway.
Yep.
So, um, uh, I'm fine with moving it forward, but with the understanding that you guys will get Bear Beat Valley locked down, you know, I know we have a form, don't we have a form that we once developed for the water companies, they fill this damn thing out?
Usually DGR's been doing it.
Yeah, DGR does those nice letters, yeah, so, DG's are-
They've been, they've been doing most of them.
You like their letter better than Dennis's?
Yes, it's more, more information- Yes, it's more information to it.
Dennis's comes in on an app.
Dennis's comes in, says, "Looks good." DGR says, "Here's the pressure and here's the available water and-" I know, okay. We got that.
Okay. So, other thoughts on the plat or any concerns?
Got something on here about drainage note being added to the plat.
There's that big drainage in the, that sits through their property. I don't know where the build sites are on these two lots of-
Yeah, cause you got that other terrain issue on the back side too.
The terrain, so if anyone builds across this hundred and ten foot major drainage, that they would have to do their own drainage study to access the back lots for house build. That would be up to them.
Okay, we put that note, we got you.
Yeah, add that to a note you're seeing.
Yep, add that as a note. We've done that on prior-
No, for drainage crossings to be engineered.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then in the ordinance, we have, um, the landowner, ordinance twenty-seven, three, one, seven, one, seven, two. Had a written agreement reframed from further subdivision for twelve months. I don't, I've never found an agreement.
Yeah, well, so, the variance-
If we have a template or-
Well, I don't know, we have to come up with one. We'll have, I mean, have, can start drafting one.
And the motion today was-
Yeah, the variance, I mean, we shouldn't do one because the variance requires, actually can't subdivide unless the, the county road gets all brought up to specification too.
So work with Ken on getting-
Yeah.
Uh, agreement in place on that.
Yep. So that would just file against the properties once they're platted, so.
Just had before final plat, the approach permits are removed and one is installed.
So applying for the approach permit is something we need to do.
That was, we threw my office.
So we can get that sized.
Yep.
Would that one be sized by Troy?
Yeah, Troy not willing to look at it. I'm gonna have to have it installed. Probably be a bigger, longer than thirty for a shared approach, I imagine. Those were the only ones I had.
Right. Other questions or comments? Those were the only ones, so.
Yep, not, not much.
All right, Roger, I think you were the one that asked, so. Gotta make the motion.
All right. So move approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. Uh, drainage note is added. Um, subdividing agreement. Submitted. And suppose we should put the approach permit submitted and approved. The other approach removed. And Bear Butte Water Valley, uh, Bear Butte Valley water letter is received.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Questions, question or comments or, uh, discussion?
I'm reading your notes.
Yeah, all right, so seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Um, all right, good luck.
You're right, you're right.
Thanks for your patience for sitting around.
You learned a lot though, right?
Well.
Yeah, he wants to ask for a tiff now.
No.
God, no.
Uh, preliminary plat of, uh, Schmidt Estates, one through four.
Okay, um, this is another one that we approved some variances for today. So what we do have is, uh, four lot subdivision. Um, these lots will be provided water from Butte Mead Water System. Um, so af- after prelim, how it kind of works, after a prelim approval, they do have some water line extensions to be made before a final. Um, so tho- all those improvements will be getting made in before we do bring back a final plat, so. Um, and obviously we do have, you look at lot three, we do have a drainage, kind of a start stop. There is a culvert there that it does continue over to the, to the east. Um, so the build site on that one obviously is in the back portion of lot three to the west, so. I believe a note on the plat there could be addressed to, for an engineered, um, crossing within, in that area, so.
Is this gonna be four separate driveways?
No, that, well, no. It can't be, can it?
Oh, no.
Cause there are only three hundred and some, so that's one thing I just wanted to talk over with Tanya and the, and the board is, where the best place for the driveways would be, um, just because of the separation, so. I know lot one can access off of one ninety-fourth or, um, Dunn Road. But even if we could access that one off of, off of one ninety-fourth, then we could, then we'd really just have the two approaches above. But I just don't know. What's everybody's thought on?
But, here's, here's my question. Is it one ninety-fourth?
Yes.
The row fair, so to speak?
Is what?
Isn't it kind of a, a main county road?
Yeah, it's, 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 uh-
So do we really need, want?
Well, yeah, and if we do one there, it's gonna have to be at least a hundred and fifty feet west of the intersection.
My, my person, I'm not speaking for the rest of these people, but. Done.
Have a shared approach between one and two and then shared approach between three and four.
Might be good for three because maybe they could-
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's it. I, I kinda like the two shared approaches because just the way your drainage comes through there, it gets a little, it's a little iffy. Or your couple of drainages in there. Would seem to make sense that three and four would share a approach.
Well, yeah, I mean, and like I said, that could maybe alleviate how they get to the back of the lot.
Right, right.
The other thing I'd like to see, I mean, you got a letter here from Bear Butte, it just says it's got water available for subdivision. I mean, it should say four taps. Yeah, from Butte Mead.
Oh, from Butte Mead. Oh, that's from that Fox guy. Okay.
We'd want to clarify that, if they know it's four taps.
No, okay.
Um, cause, you know, subdivision could be one lot, you know, one extra lot or something. Some kind of confirmation. What are you working on there, Tanya?
I was gonna ask Shannon, the high point on lot three is on south, what you want the approach to come in off of two, from three?
No, we'd be right here.
When I was out there, this is not hate.
Oh, hate?
Well, cause when, I went out there and looked at the project. Where the arrow is a Schmidt, it's-
Oh, yeah.
This is our low line area. This is our, this is the no dr- the master drainage. This is all lower and this comes higher. The lot, this is that, um, piece that runs north, east, south, north to south, whatever, north to east. That finger drainage easement, and so here's your lot line between two and three would be right here, basically, it was right here. So they're gonna have to build over here, aren't they, Shannon?
Yes.
Cause this starts to fall towards the north.
Yep, yep.
So.
Yeah, lot three.
So wouldn't you want your, lot two might actually end up with, fortunately, Dunn Road is just a local road, so a hundred and fifty's only required for, is it? It's a local, so a hundred and fifty foot driveway spacing is all that's required. So you might have to have a shared here to get to three in the back anyways, or just a lot line a little bit, so they can come in here and then do two and one shared. And four's gonna have to be its own wherever they can get approaching.
Okay.
My other, when I was out there, this ditch on Dunn Road is very deep. There's a thirty-five inch culvert already. They're gonna have to size a culvert out there to meet, we're not, I'm, would not be in favor of an eighteen inch culvert in that deep of a ditch. It runs water someplace. It runs back down. Um, and then when-
Yeah, and the approaches, right?
Yep. And then the utility company. Lot one and two will be served by Bear Butte Electric. No one, I did not receive any confirmation for lot three and four. And when I talked to Bear Butte, their line is only to a certain point.
And I'm not sure why Black Hills Energy hasn't responded. They're usually, just, I mean, they're usually pretty good to respond to, but I don't know who's in this area.
So, they have a transformer box that sits down here in the northeast corner of section four. So there's no utility brought north. So my question is, would we require the utility, the electrical line to be brought north along those lots, one through four? Yep, because when I talked to Bear Butte or you-
You'd Electric?
You'd Electric. They would split the cost, but it's not a hundred percent on electric company, landowner. So I thought, the way we do our subdivisions, even though they're using county roads, is they still need to put their infrastructure in before final plots.
Yeah, I think they do. I mean, we have in the past, so, yep, or bond.
And then the other thing is when I was out there inspecting, Schmitz have a building that's being built with no building permits and that would have to be rectified before any lot.
Hey, don't look at me. I don't pay attention to this thing.
I know.
Um, so do you want that rectified before we move the preliminary plat forward?
I would say final. It's gonna take them a while to get all that put together, probably.
Well, I might just even get the building permit.
Yeah, they could because preliminary wouldn't go on until August twenty-sixth. We can make that work.
Okay. Are you looking for them?
It's on their-
Uh, I'd be that way, right there where their home is.
It's right here. They're adding a new pole barn or some, some new building right about in here. It's on theirs, but this is their land they're subdividing, so. Cleaning it up now.
See, we found, look at all the stuff we find doing this.
We would be looking to continue this?
Good thing you went on to the site visit.
Uh, do you wanna continue or do you think you can get most of this stuff?
Um, this, no, I think we're good on that. I think we can, for the plat wise, I can, yep.
Are you okay with that?
You guys are.
Yep, because then I, the preliminary plat won't be on until August twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so, I mean, basically, the commission, what, she's asking is we make the motion that the commission not pass it unless the building permits. Oh, oh, it's. Building permit?
I know there's a lot. Approaches clarified.
Building permit, water.
Power.
Approaches.
We have a power letter. We just, those are improvements that have to be made.
I don't have- Power letters.
All from Black Hills Energy.
Well, only for two lots, you have power.
Black Hills, there's two-
Butte, Butte only serves, Butte only served one, two lots, and then there's a cutoff line right there that Black Hills bar.
Yeah.
Down the middle.
And they don't.
Of the field.
Um, the, the written subdivision agreement needs to be done, cause there's no master plan. Cluster mailbox from postal service needs to be addressed.
And that has, they did leave, but, um, I know Tyler, the husband, did talk to postal service finally in, in Vail and they sent him to Sturgis. And then Sean said that they wanted individual, do you need someone writing from him to do that?
And then you'll have to do a-
Cause they're just gonna do an individual mailbox at every driveway, wherever the driveway is. Here's what he told them, that he wanted.
Yeah, we want that in writing.
Well, if they got shared ones, at least. Um. All right, well, that's getting to be quite a list.
That's what I was thinking.
Mentioned Butte Mead Water, water line extensions?
I think Butte Mead Water, we just need them to clarify that they got four hookups there. Cause he just says subdivision, doesn't say how many.
Confirm four hookups?
On the, on this one, on the, um, just want a statement from the owners saying that, just, uh, written statement saying they will, they will not subdivide within next to-
No, Ken will, Ken will, he's gonna do the one for Carl's.
Let's do a form.
Will do, have the same one consistently through.
Okay, kinda like our egg form.
Yep.
All that, yep, okay.
All right, so somebody got this all written down?
Yep. Ready?
Oh. Yeah. You guys are just throwing rocks today. You're not really making any. These guys are getting it all done. All right, go.
Make a motion to. I got it. Make a motion to. Where? Building permit addressed?
Building permit addressed before the next, before it hits the county commission.
Yes. Water, letter. Confirmation of power to each of the lots. Rest. Subdivision of the rest here. And no subdividing on the road variance. Roads brought up to the tax asset.
Um, on the approaches, do you want the culvert issue called out? The water study for the culverts or is just the approach permit, that's gonna be part of it?
It'd be part of the approach permit. About to take Troy out there to-
Yep, I think so.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded. Yeah, I think they, and then I think you guys are gonna have to look at where the best places to approach are. I think Tanya, there are some good issues is if you try to do a joint one through three and four, whether three just has a terrible problem getting to where it really was.
Yeah, we can do that on site.
Yeah, we need Troy out there for everything, what this is.
Okay.
Yep. Question on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Um, what, next issue. Form of intent, water source, plat watts one, two, and three in well lot track nine, sunset subdivision. I'm trying. They weren't technically the last one.
Box Elder stuff, since this was yours and that.
I'll give you a little background. This is a plat that I'm working on with, um, Terry Johnson. So, we're proposing to do a three lot subdivision. The, there's Box Elder, we're only getting one tap, it's all existing, of course, that, um, serves lot two. So there is an existing well on the site, um, so that would, the idea was to utilize that well to serve lots one and three. So that's the plat that, that's presented, that's shown, um, that you see, so. Um, from the next step that we're talking about today, I just got brought up to speed a little bit on it as, um, apparently the water test and maybe you wanna talk about that, the? Terry, you wanna come up?
So, so this plat is within Box Elder's platting jurisdiction, so that's why the city of Box Elder has control over the plat. It's been brought up, so they sent it to my office for review. I reviewed against our ordinances for building permits. And as part of the building permit process, one and three would have to have potable water. Um, I didn't know, P, P Foss is in the area from Ellsworth. I'm not real familiar with it, so I have reached out to Ellsworth. That's a letter that, the email that you have on your desk also, um, and then I asked the homeowners to explain their water. They were, had, once asked me for a cistern and we do not allow cisterns at the Mead County.
So, yeah, according to the, I mean, according to that test, um, we, they did do soil, obviously, we had to, we had to show production for the well and then do, um, water test as part of that smittle to Box Elder. Um, that was all done, um, within this, um, at that time, I didn't know, I didn't realize they even tested for. But what do you know about that during the?
I got, uh, when I got the testing all done at, um, the continent, it said on the bottom there that it was all ETA standards. I don't know if you saw that or not, but. So I thought, well, I didn't have any more tests to do, but then there's this other, this lady neighbor up north that it- So, I thought, well, I didn't have any more tests to do, but then there's this other, this lady, neighbor up north, said that, uh, she came to the meeting there at Box Elder and said that, um, test done, and she had a bit of information on that.
Yeah, I, I looked at your midco test, like, it doesn't, I think really, midco's gonna have to test it and say there's no PFOS in it, they don't test for that unless they're asked. Specifically, I think, to test for it. So, if you just ask, hey, I wanna test it for, and they'll just test the standard back tees and, like, nitrates.
For eggs, it's like, what is this, like, if I was gonna get a loan from the bank, or FHA, or whoever else, that's all I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, I don't, I don't, they won't, I, I, you can ask midco, but they don't standardly test for PFOS unless it's asked for. They'll say PFOS either found or not found, because that PFOS, um, you know, that whole, you're in the Plume area, so I don't know how deep your well is. But a lot of it depends on how deep your well is. Yeah, yeah, then-
Is that the radon?
No, the PFOS is that forever chemical.
Oh.
Um, yeah, so if you're forty feet, my guess is it's gonna test hot.
Is there a treatment?
I think so, there, I think it's incredibly, I think technically there is, but it's incredibly expensive, like reverse. Yeah, go ahead, sir, identify who you are and then-
Oh, aye. Went to midcon, Dean said. Here and out of. Is it passable? Putting the standards that are in, say, including the EPA standard. Says that, that's as far as he knows, and then we have what-
Tanya.
Name, but she brought us the letter, and Terry also asked for this letter, and the government is saying-
You're looking at the government letter?
Government is saying, well, you can read the letter.
Yeah, I understand that.
And they're saying that if the, they've done, been through this before, oh, if they, it will possibly clean up for the well. Clean that up, they've done it before, before that, they would do that.
Box Elder.
Now, there's another aspect to this, what I was told, that the contractor- I Dean himself, carbon system will clean up. Terry Johnson himself has said that, carbon system, he'd be willing to- So, he's willing to do, we're, we're, do whatever we can. That's what comes right from Dean from midcon.
Dean put it in a letter.
This letter says the Air Force would install and operate a treatment system at a red-
So, the Air Force has done different things on it, what they did for a bunch of people, they just hauled water in for them.
Oh.
Even though they had wells they could use on their lawn and stuff like that. But, I mean, this PFOS is- Every, every water system has to test for it, every public, federal.
Dean said, I don't know if I wanted to, it wasn't a, you know, not a line on, on putting a system in.
Put in a lot. I mean, at least that's my position, I, I mean, it's got, I, you know, this whole PFOS thing, is the Air Force done all this things. I'm actually kinda surprised where Box Elder is on it, 'cause I think they put all these restrictions on telling people that they need to hook up the system. Air Force paid Box Elder a bunch of money to run mains out there, take people off PFOS that had the shallow well. So, I, I know that all the public systems have to test for it.
I think it's all cleaned up, and it's all good to go.
Who did?
Twenty, twenty years, I mean, twenty years to do it. Thought I saw, I mean, I thought one of my letters I went through, that it was, it was cleaned up, and they were cleaned up as far as even the well. And then I was really surprised that when I paid the bill, that on, on my- said on there that it was, you know, standard EPA standards, it was, it was all right.
Oh, that's, air and PFOS is drinking it. I, I don't know, I mean, I, I think that test has to happen, Dean send the letter, and we could, that's- I'm just telling you, everything I've heard from the airport is it's carcinogen, and it's nasty, and they've shut everybody down out there, and Rapid City just extended a line to take a bunch of people out there hauling water in for them every week, years, on the, on the west side of Box Elder. So, um, you, maybe you're not in the Plume even, but. I don't, like I said, I mean, I don't know, Box Elder's gonna let you plot it, but at least my position is, I'm, I'm, I gotta know where that, what status of the PFOS and what's gonna be done. Following, you know, if Dean writes a good letter, I mean, Dean knows his stuff, so I don't have any problem with that, but I- I mean, that's my thought, I don't know, other comments, I, like you're in the, unfortunately. You guys have that PFOS stuff? Yeah, it's forever chemical, it doesn't break down, um, and that's, and, and it's, it- Yeah, it's about, about like that, but radon actually tends to break down. PFOS might be with us forever. Go ahead, sir. Yep. Well, I know, well, yeah, I think what the Fed said is, we're gonna take care of this for twenty years, and everybody's on their own, so.
Yeah, right, and that's what they're saying, but I just wanna, like, know what they said about it.
Yeah, I, I-
That's what.
Yeah, okay. Well, quite frankly, I think you should test for it, I mean, you're gonna have to test for the PFOS, that's, 'cause Dean's gonna have to tell you.
Are they saying that we can, we can still filter it out, though, through a-
I don't know, he says, Dean says there's an easy filter process, I, yeah.
I guess I'll do the letter.
Said he's willing to write a letter, says he's-
I'm gonna probably have grandkids out there, so I don't wanna have any problem with, and I'm sure wants the water clean.
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, yeah, and I, you know, like I said, this is, but, so I know that in the last three or five years, the federal government's required every public system to test for PFOS. So, yeah, and, I'm not real happy about it.
So, I would, I would say, yes, he needs to test for PFOS in a letter, if it can be filtered, and what the system would inquire.
Yeah, 'cause we're not experts on it either, so if Dean says, here's where the system you'd need to purify the water. I mean, I don't know, other thoughts, I mean, I mean, I, you know, kinda one of those things, you know, you wanna drink poison, that's your call, but if you wanna, if you're gonna subdivide your land and let-
I mean, I don't want to, I'm, I'm sure don't want the grandkids to drink that.
So.
I drank some pretty bad water in my day.
Yeah, I'm with you. I grew up in Mitchell, you should drink Lake Mitchell water, man, oh. All right, um, appreciate you guys' patience, it's been a long day, and you guys stuck, you were here for quite a while, so.
Oh, we have to make-
Yeah, the joke's getting old, but, you know, maybe you can get a tiff to fix it, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um, all right, next.
That was, I have nothing else to agenda, adjourned.
All right, is there a second? Okay, uh, let's discuss it. All right, all those in favor of adjournings, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Passes.